The May 14, 2019, regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order with all members present. All members are here. I'm going to ask Commissioner Darlene Love to do the invocation, and we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Caitlin Alsman.
Would you please stand? Tonight, as we bow and lift our heads into the hills whence cometh our help, again, we're so grateful for these young folks that are here today, the AYSO and their directors, their parents, and for this council. And as we spend a good evening with them, let us all leave with joy, love, and happiness in your name. Amen.
Okay, if she can lead us on the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here, and I just wanna just say that we have a very well-behaved group of young children here, young adults, young children, and so I'm really happy that they're here visiting us. There's going to be some recognitions that they're gonna be involved with, but I'm really happy that they're here and this is the best that, some of the best students that City of Hawthorne has to offer the community and society. Alright, so, I would like to call Mrs. Julia Lemus de Solares to come up to the podium. Que se acerque, por favor, la señora Julia Lemus de Solares. Con su nieto, Oscar Solares, with her grandson, Oscar Solares. We're celebrating her 105th year birthday, folks. Let's give her a round of applause! And, we as the city council have a very special proclamation in honor of her. Information was provided by her grandson, Oscar, and it goes a little something like this: Whereas, we have a proclamation honoring Julia Lemus de Solares on her 105th birthday. She was born on April 24, 1914, in the District of Santa Rosa, Guatemala, in a small village known as Chapas, and is the second child of eight siblings. During her time in her home country, she made a humble living by making dresses for the local children for baptisms and other occasions. In the 1980s, she moved to the United States, to the City of Hawthorne, in pursuit of a better life for herself and her seven daughters. Julia embodies what it means to be a strong, healthy, faithful, optimistic, charismatic, caring, and empathetic woman. Among the many life lessons, there are three critical lessons that have made a tremendous impact for the entire family. First, she encouraged the priority of having faith in God and never to let fear override optimism. Second, poverty would never conquer as long as the family stayed united. Third, you have to be intentional with everyday actions. You have to treat everyone the same and with respect. Julia's legacy is actively present in five generations of family. That means, there's kids, there's parents, right? Kids, there's kids, there's parents, there's grandparents, there's great-grandparents, and there's great-great-grandparents. So that's what that means. For many decades, she has watched over her grandchildren and instilled in them her core principles. She continues to hold her head up high by carrying out her purposes as the family's mainstay. Grandma Julia is the pillar of strength for the Solares family, and the people of Hawthorne are extremely honored to acknowledge Julia Lemus de Solares for her longevity of life, her devotion to family, and her contributions to our community, but by obviously raising a great family here in the City of Hawthorne. The Hawthorne City Council formally recognizes Julia's 105th birthday and dedication to the City of Hawthorne. This has been signed by all members of the city council on the 14th day of May, 2019. Let's give her a round of applause! Commissioner Solares, would your grandmother like to say anything through you or from you, through you? ¿Cómo se siente? ¿How do you feel today?
Pues yo, pues yo agradecido, verdad, por todo lo que me han ayudado, por la gracia de Dios. Y le pide a Dios que sigan adelante, que Dios los bendiga y toda la vida. Son muy nuestros deseos.
Gracias, señora.
Gracias.
Can you translate that, and I'm gonna ask her another question after that?
She basically said, "Thank you," that she feels very fortunate and grateful, that she wishes you many blessings and fortunes in the hard work that you're doing for our city.
So I'm gonna ask her something. What is your secret for such a long life? ¿Cuál es su secreto, señora, por esta vida tan larga que ha tenido usted?
El poder de Dios no puede ser otra cosa. Estoy muy agradecida con ustedes por tanto que me han ayudado, por la gracia de Dios, que Dios los bendiga, que los cuide de todos males, de todos peligros, con toda su familia. Son nuestros deseos para todos ustedes que trabajan.
That's awesome. Oscar, you know what I'm trying to get at. What is her secret? Doesn't she have a secret elixir every day? Didn't you tell me?
I'll be fully transparent. Her secret is her faith in God. She says that that's what gives her the power to continue moving forward. She does have a little medicine here and there. It's her little tequila from time to time. But she does it with precaution, obviously, because she's still standing up strong.
Well, thank you so much for being here. Congratulations. We'd like to take a picture with you as a city council if you could make your way over here. Let's give her a big round of applause, another one.
Mayor Vargas, may I please share a few words just to my grandmother?
Yeah, of course, absolutely.
And I'm sorry, I'm gonna say this in Spanish. But, abuelita, fue muy difícil escribir este documento porque ha vivido 105 años y es imposible capturar todo lo que usted ha hecho por nosotros. Aunque los últimos dos años han sido muy difíciles, usted ha sido nuestra piedra.
Hola, gracias a Dios, hijo. Se los agradezco mucho a todos ustedes que trabajan aquí. Que Dios los bendiga con toda su familia y que sigan adelante con toda nuestra familia hoy. Son nuestros deseos. Gracias.
Si, señora. Oscar says, "This was a very difficult proclamation to write" because there's so many things that they want to say about her. And they're also thanking her for being like the glue that held them together in these last couple of years because they've had some serious family losses. And she says, "Thank you still to God, thanks to the family, the community, for supporting her." So let's give her another round of applause, and let's take that picture.
Y muy agradecido por todo, por Dios, que Dios los acompañe en toda su vida. Gracias.
Hello, family. Whoever hears from your family, help me here. Alright, here we go, and then, three, two, one. Alright, couple more, and then, three, two, one. Wasn't it hot? Alright, folks, we have another special presentation, and it's good that the grandchildren of Ms. Lemus de Solares are here too so they can appreciate some of their fellow youth's accomplishments. Councilmember Tejeda has a presentation on the agenda, and it's honoring Hawthorne Warriors, AYSO Region 21. We're all big supporters of the AYSO. Some of the other teams have gone also to national finals, and we want to hear about what these young gentlemen's accomplishments have been. So, thank you for being here, guys. Go ahead, councilmember.
Well, I was so excited, I left my notes at home, you know? But, you know, when our kids make a mistake, boy, everybody hears about it, but it's rare that when they do something spectacular, something amazing, that we should acknowledge that, you know, that we should do more of that. And so, I'd like to present to you guys and tell you a little bit about some kids that I know personally, but a group of parents and coaches and a team that's done some pretty amazing stuff. So, what I'm gonna do right now, we're here to recognize the Hawthorne Warriors, Boys Under 12, 2018. But, since I forgot my notes, I'm gonna read right off of the email that I got from the coach, because I asked him, "Hey, give me a little rundown on what all of this stuff really means," because I'm not a big soccer guy, I'm a big kid guy, but not a... And so, he said, "The team took first place. This all started, our team took first place in Long Beach Mayor's Cup, a turkey tournament, by defeating six outstanding teams. In that tournament, we allowed four goals while scoring 31. Our second first place during the regular season was at Hawthorne, AYSO Region 21. Here, we went 10-0 in our division. It was composed of 10 teams. The second championship we took was also in Region 21. This championship advanced us to the regional. Our third championship was also Regional, Region 21. We won the Commissioner's Cup. This cup only, this cup is only for teams that met their requirements during the regular season. In regional play, we ended up in second place in a pool of 12. By placing second, we were guaranteed a ticket to the section. In the tournament, we placed fourth in a pool of 12. During a stretch of five months, the boys performed at a very high level. We were unbeaten in five months. In six months, the boys' record was 30 wins, two losses, and one tie." Okay, so that's pretty, pretty good. Now, is Alex Guerrero here? Where's Alex? Thank you for coming. I'm gonna just name, I'm just gonna, you know, just name a few of you guys. Alex Guerrero is the coach, and this is what I mean by, you know, all the time that the parents spend with these kids. You know, it's great what the kids do, but all the time the parents spend, all the time the coaches spend, is how you produce these kinds of children and these kinds of champions. And I was told that Alex, they had to calm him down several times because they were afraid he was gonna get a heart attack out in the field. I don't know if that's true or not, but that's what I heard. Coach Alex Guerrero, Assistant Coach Jose Espino, is he here? Good, thank you, Jose. And Team Mom Clarissa Quintero, you're here? Wonderful. Okay, then we got Emmanuel Pérez, Manny Pérez, Dominic Quintero, Jonathan Peña, Julian Crisotomo, Adrian Ramos Sánchez, Jared Castañeda, Damian Espino, Julian Estrella, Jesse Galán, Joshua Hernández, Jose González, Matthew Marique. In recognition of the excellence of your outstanding accomplishments on the soccer field, we are extremely proud to have you as part of our community. Your efforts are much appreciated. Presented on this 14th day of May, 2019, by City Council Alex Mayer, Pro Tem Olivia Valentine, Councilman Alex Montero, Councilman Hader Awad, and Councilman Mike Toledo. You know, I'm really, really proud of you guys, and I wish that we would do more of this, to be honest with you. I would like to recognize our children more than the people that come to complain, and we need them. We need them, but we need to have you guys come up here and let us see the hard work that you and the parents and you guys, and you guys must have been killers on that soccer team, and that's a reflection of your coaching and the parents. And so, can we get them all to come up here and get a group picture?
Absolutely.
What do you think?
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely important. Oh, he's ready.
Alright, alright. Alright, 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 alright. Okay, thank you guys for recognizing the children, communities. So happy to have a great community. Some of you might remember, or some of you might not know, AYSO was based here in the City of Hawthorne, off of Isis Avenue, for a period of time, and this is where they had their headquarters. During the time where Pele was like a spokesman for them and I think part of their administrative board, Pele, the person who they say is the best soccer player. So yes, they've been in Hawthorne for a while, then I think they went to Torrance. So, we have a lot of, we have a great history with soccer. Yes, City Treasurer David Patterson has a presentation on the agenda. Where did he go? Oh, there he is now. Okay. Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. So I'm trying to be as, to the point as possible. Essentially, I wanted to, let me see, a couple weeks ago, last month, I was at the Treasurer's Conference in San Diego, and I ran into our auditor, and also ran into the representative of our bank, Bank of the West, our banking partner. And they shared with me just some news that we aren't really taking advantage of all the interest that we could be earning, all the money that we could be earning as a city. And it bothered me. I wanted to bring that to the city council's attention, but also, just in conjunction with some, I guess, other recommendations that I think we should take advantage of. Essentially, it's kind of related to a narrative that I've had since I've been elected, the fact that I believe that our city has been losing out on a lot by not investing in the Treasurer's Office the way other cities have. And so, I think it's a time for us to change the way we look at the Treasurer's Office as opposed to, from being more of an expense to being the asset that it could be and has been for other cities. So I'm gonna go over a few things. One, make the case for an investment in Treasurer's Office, talk a little bit about the history of the office, some recent successes that we've had in the office, and some opportunities I've identified from, you know, talking to some of those people, and some recommendations that I have. So essentially, look at the history of the Treasurer's Office. Right now, it's a part-time elected position, and it's only, only the elected Treasurer in office is only me. Historically, it hasn't always been like that. Years ago, I think, I don't know, at least 15-plus years ago, the Treasurer's Office was a full-time elected position and had a deputy treasurer. I don't know if the Treasurer's was full-time or part-time, somebody will have to inform me of that. But at some, at some point in the past, the deputy treasurer was eliminated, the treasurer was made from full-time to part-time, and all the Treasurer's duties were moved over from the Treasurer's Office to the Finance Department. At that same time, the head of the Finance Department was eliminated, the director position was eliminated. So essentially, a couple things happened. It was a consolidation of all the handling of the money and oversight of the money into one office without a subject matter expert in charge of that office. Essentially, it was controlled by the city manager at that time. And so, that's opened up the city to some challenges. And it's not just my opinion, but just going based upon what's happened over the last 15 years. So it hadn't been the proper type of supervision in that office, there hasn't been the proper independent oversight of our finances. So the purpose of the Treasurer's Office is to be a representative of the people, to act as oversight over how our cash is being handled, right, and be kind of like, act as a check and balance against things, you know, not happening where they probably, against things going wrong. And it eliminated the opportunity for a proper separation of duties. So one of the things I learned just in business school, that you typically don't want to have the same person or even department bringing in the money and accounting for the money. It makes it very easy to make those numbers match. Does that make sense? And so, the purpose of the Treasurer's Office is supposed to be, kind of, act as a check and balance in that respect, where the Finance Department handles the accounting, and the Treasurer's Office in most cities handles the banking. And so, what's happened over the last 15 years, right, this change has allowed for some theft in the city's finances, some, you know, misallocation of funds, and some misreporting of funds of our finances over the years. It's caused our city to, we pay more in banking fees than we need to, than has been necessary, because honestly, there hasn't been the right staff in place. You know, the Finance Department can only do so much, right? They do a great job, and, you know, having them do the Treasurer's job and the Finance Department's job can be a bit much. And especially without a director, there's a lot of things that kind of went by the wayside. So we pay more in fees than we need to have, and we missed out on a lot of investment income over the years. I came in in 2013, and, you know, just to put it plainly, I happen to have a lot of expertise in this area of finance, investments, organizational development. You know, I've been an investment advisor for over 17 years now. I have about five investment licenses in the industry. And so, I've been able to kind of add some value, but because, but we shouldn't have to depend on that happening, right, that by luck, somebody comes into this office with this type of expertise to add some value. But since I've been elected, my narrative really has been the same, that we, the city could benefit from a more complete Treasurer's Office that operates the way other cities operate. Better investments could be made, banking options, better banking options could be pursued, and greater separation of duties could have occurred to really protect against some improprieties that's happened over the years. And over the years, we've acted kind of in reaction to some things happening, and we've instituted some of these things in different ways. But the fact of the matter is, because the office hadn't existed the way it should, it's been, we've been in reaction a lot, and a lot of the things we've missed out on. So let's start with banking. So our previous banking partner was Wells Fargo. We were with Wells Fargo for a long time, I would imagine at least 20 years or longer, from what I gather. You know, I did some research and realized that we're paying way more in banking fees than other cities. I had a meeting with our banking partner back in 2014, and we changed some of our banking fees. They walked into the meeting, and without me even saying anything, because I called at the meeting, they like slashed a lot of the fees that they were charging us. The next year, we saved $26,000 in banking fees. That, around that time, September, I wrote a memo, sent it out to the council, the city manager, the city attorney at the time, that we should probably pursue a new bank. That didn't happen right away because, of course, our, there was no fully-built-out Treasurer's Office to pursue that, and it was more than what the Finance Department could do at the time. And so, we finally got around to that at the end of 2016. And this is really the impact of these changes over our banking fees over the years. So starting in 2013, 14, we were paying about $120,000 a year in banking fees with Wells Fargo. The next year, we paid $111,000 in fees. End of that year is when I had that conversation and brought down some of the fees. The following year, we saved, you know, a little bit of money. Our fees dropped down to $94,000. Year after that, 2016, 17, our fees went up, don't know why. But RFP was issued at the end of that year, and Bank of the West was chosen, it was implemented, at the beginning of 2017, 2018. We immediately saved money, right, and at that time, we were still with Wells Fargo and Bank of the West as we were making a transition, but we saved immediately $37,000 that year. And then going into this fiscal year, we saved additional $39,000 because we're estimated to only spend about $30,000 this year in banking fees. And from my understanding and speaking with our finance directors, most of that is being reimbursed. I think about $20,000 that is being reimbursed by charging some convenience fees when people use their credit cards. So essentially, right, we've, if you go from 2013, 14 to today, we are saving about $90,000 a year in banking fees. This is something that could have been, could have happened a long time ago. You know, we were, by any other banker's estimation, being taken advantage of by Wells Fargo for quite some time. And because there hadn't been anybody to focus on this type of stuff, that was able to continue, right, without check. Talking about investments, our investments, since 2013, 14, we've had at least about $7 million of extra cash on hand. I say "extra" because it's been sitting in our life, and some money's been in money market or in CDs, and hasn't been touched. And for most of those years, we haven't been earning any money on that money. Maybe a quarter of a percent, I remember when I first got elected, I was, you know, complaining we're making a quarter of a percent of our money. We could have been earning one or two, two percent at the time. And so, we've had very little returns, and then many of these years, we've had too much cash that we're keeping in our checking account. When we worked with Wells Fargo, that was one of the reasons why we're paying too much in fees. They say we were keeping too much cash in our checking account, we were being charged penalties for doing so, outside of the fact that that money wasn't earning an interest, being elsewhere. In the middle of 2014, sent a letter to the council, city manager, city attorney, requesting some resources to better invest our money. Didn't get the support to start investing our money in a different way until the beginning of this fiscal year. And we can see the impact that that's made. So you're looking back at 2013, 14, this is according to our CAFER, right? So you're looking back in 2013, 14, this is according to our CAFER, right? So if there's more information that's out there that I missed, you know, uh, somebody let me know, but according to our, our annual financial statements, that in 2013, 14, we made $7,000, 14, 15, made $1,900, 15, 16, made $38,000, 16, 17, $15,000, 17, 18, $32,000, and then this fiscal year, year to, year to date, we're already up $167,000. Projected to make $189,000 for this fiscal year. And I believe that these aren't even all our numbers. I don't believe all the interest that we earn in life is being reported in, in these reports properly. So I think, you know, is much higher in all of these years, quite honestly, but especially in this last year. Um, you know, I take some of the, some of the, um, the credit for it, but honestly, you know, the council made some decisions, we got some new money into the city, we got an extra like $6 million that the council said, hey, we really don't need to put our hands on right now, you know, David, let's see what you got, let's go ahead and invest it. And we, you know, we invested it in a ladder strategy, very simple strategy, uh, not even taking advantage of all the things we can take advantage of, uh, but very simple strategy. And, you know, that, that portfolio earns on average about, you know, two and a half percent, right, which is not an insane amount of money, but it comes out to be $189,000 a year. You look at from 2013 through this year, we've always had six or seven million dollars in cash, earning no, no percent, at the best a quarter of a percent. Even if that earned two percent those past years, that would have been a, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars a year that we should have been earning, uh, on that money. And so this is that, that same thing in a, in a grab form. Um, you know, having any bit of effort invested in the Treasurer's Office has big dividends, right? And so my position is we, we invest more time and effort, more manpower, really, some subject matter expertise and manpower in that, in this office, that we can do much more for the city. Uh, last month, I ran into an auditor, he said, hey, we're keeping way too much money in our checking account, right? We have no money that we're putting in savings. Uh, it's, it's cost us, but by his estimation, a half million dollars in interest that we're not, that we're not earning, right? By just, just sitting in our checking account doing nothing. Uh, city, uh, informed the, the city of that. He told me, the city hired a, a consultant to do a cash flow analysis and confirm what he said, their, their report said that we're missing out about a quarter million dollars, right, according to their report, and I think it was a bit conservative. Um, uh, myself and the finance directors, we had a meeting with Bank of the West, uh, last week, and based upon that conversation, you know, it looks like we keep about $18 million too much money in our checking account, um, on average, right, throughout the course of the year. If we put that just in a savings account that Bank of the West offers, it pays about two percent, that would make us $360,000, right? Um, and obviously, something we can take advantage of now, we don't need any, do anything special to do so, but the fact of the matter is we're, we're always kind of behind the, the A-ball is my, is my, uh, is my argument, right? A lot of this stuff could have been done ten years ago, a better cash management. We have about $36 million sitting in our checking account, which represents about six months of expenses. I think we absolutely should have six months of expenses readily available, right, in cash, uh, but it doesn't have to be in checking, right? Some of it could be in savings, could be in life, could be earning two percent, 2.4 percent, much more money. We have about $12 million in life, $6.9 million in CDs. The 6.9 million is earning about 2.4 percent, the 12 million in life is earning about 2 percent. But the fact of the matter is, we need to be much more on top of investing that money in life and not keep it all in life and have it sit there idly, because even though the interest rates are high now, they're not always going to be like that. Interest rates are falling. And so a year from now, life is not going to be paying 2.4 percent, right? A year from now, it's going to be less. And there needs to be a, uh, strategies in place to take advantage of all the other options that the government gives us to invest our money. You know, the law says we can't invest anywhere that had, that doesn't guarantee us a return. And there's a lot of options that are out there that we just don't take advantage of because the office isn't staffed to be able to do so. Does that make sense? I, I believe that, um, not properly managing our investments, or let me see, doing it to the ability that's possible, right? Not properly, uh, managing the money in our checking, or, or even managing our different options, uh, for some money that's in our life, we're losing out on, I believe, really as much as a half million dollars a year in interest, right? And so as, as proud as I am that, you know, we made this impact over this last fiscal year, there's a lot, there's a lot of money that we're not making that doesn't require anything tricky, just requires some money, some, having somebody on top of putting money places that guarantee interest, right? For different terms, whether it be cash, two-week terms, uh, uh, 30-day terms, six months, 18 months, all that stuff, there's a lot of different options that are out there. Um, so my recommendation is we need to treat that Treasurer's Office as an asset and invest in it. I believe investing in the Treasurer's Office yields dividends, uh, and tremendous returns. Uh, if you look at historically, if we would have had a fully functional Treasurer's Office over the last fifteen years, we would have made, we would have saved about $2 million in banking fees, would have made at least $1.5 million in interest, um, just conservably, right? Because right now, we're paying $100, $120,000 a year, just too much in banking fees over the last 10, 15 years. And we're missing out about $200,000 a year in interest by having our money just sitting in life, uh, during a time was only making a quarter percent, where we could have been in bonds making one or two percent. Uh, and we could, I believe by having a Treasurer's Office that operates like other cities, acting as a check and balance against, uh, um, you know, the accounting part of the city, uh, a lot of the improprieties that's happened over the years wouldn't have had to have happened. Um, there could have been somebody else with some subject matter expertise looking at that stuff. And so I, I have a lot of recommendations. I believe long-term, we should fully build out the Treasurer's Office like other cities have, but immediate, we should hire, uh, we should invest the money to the Treasurer's Office to hire a consultant. Uh, I would love to spend all day to invest the money, but, you know, as a part-time elected official with no staff, it's not really possible. But we can hire a consultant that does this for a living to help with recommendations in our cash management and investing some money. Uh, I got a recommendation, um, I'll get to that next. And we should, we should also create a more comprehensive kind of cash management plan that anybody can follow. We have a standard for how much money we keep in savings, how much we keep in checking, uh, how much is available to be invested for six months or longer, right? So that, um, it's just part of policy, right, that our money's being taken care of properly. Uh, and we need to, you know, have a, I think a little more active strategy for the money that's sitting in life, I think that, that can make us a lot of money. Did some, some research on a consultant that we can hire, we may or may not hire this consultant if the city wants to hire a consultant or not, but got a recommendation from the city of Carson. Um, this company, FTM Financial, ran by Rick Phillips, uh, has been doing investment, used to invest for over 25 years. Um, invest billions of dollars currently. Um, clients include city of LA, Carson, Redondo Beach, many more. But for a fee of $50,000, they can kind of take over the investments, uh, for the city and make recommendations of our cash management, they understand exactly how cities run, and how we get more money in certain times of the year, less money in other times of the year, um, and can be a, a partner in that respect. Uh, I believe, you know, that $50,000 investment can make us a half a million dollars, quite honestly, uh, especially with proper kind of accountability, you know, treasurer being, hold them accountable and making sure that stuff happens. Um, and they would, you know, make, make monthly reports, quarterly reports, uh, come out and do presentations on a quarterly and a semi-annual basis, and be available, you know, as we need them. Um, that's the crux of the presentation, there's a little bit more that I have in here, though, but I believe long-term, we should really build out the Treasurer's Office, just like every other city does, uh, consistent with the, with the government code. I'm not saying we do anything different, but exactly what the government code says that we should do, exactly how other cities interpret it. Like every other city, they have more than just a part-time treasurer, they have at least one full-time staff, if not multiple full-time staff, in every other city in the area, um, whether the treasurer be full-time or part-time. So, uh, so, you know, to summarize, my recommendation is, like the asset, we look into, you know, taking $50,000 out of, out of the extra 160 that, that's made this year, so we're only budgeted to make $20,000 in interest this year, we're making 180. Take $50,000 of that extra money and invest it back into the office, so we make another half a million dollars.
All right, I've got a question, I have a question. Anybody have a question over there?
Questions too.
All right, uh, yeah, let me ask you a question. Um, no, thank you for your time, thank you for expressing that. And I've always said that, like, based on what you said and, well, your explanation, are you committing to be our treasurer, elected treasurer for like, from here till eternity? Because it doesn't seem like this plan, this plan wouldn't work if we didn't have somebody in the elected portion that's going to be monitored. I mean, right? I mean,
No, so that's why I think that long-term.
Are we going to be fully dependent on this consultant to give us the advice that, you know?
So that's why I think long-term, though, there's, the Treasurer should be built out. If there is a full-time deputy treasurer, right, that's, you know, there, to hire them, they have to have subject matter expertise. Uh, there will always be somebody, uh, by structure and design, that's in place that knows about this stuff, whether the elected treasurer does or not, there's a full-time deputy treasurer that this is what they, you know, have been trained to do. Uh, they'll be in position to kind of make these decisions and help out this oversight.
The investments page where it shows the interest earned, I wanted to know, like, how much can you attribute, uh, to just, uh, maybe just general increased interest dictated by the government, or how much of it could be attributed to strategic moves we've had, or how much of it has just been simply the amount of money we've put in?
You know, it's a combination of all those things, right? Because, uh, years ago, life was paying a quarter of a percent, now it pays 2.4 percent. So just keeping money in life would have increased our, our returns, uh, anyway. Putting into this strategic, uh, plan that I put in is brought returns over and above what life has brought, because life's returns have slowly increased, they weren't always where they're at today, it's been, it changes on a monthly basis. Uh, so we would definitely have made more money just keeping our money in life doing nothing, just because the interest rates are going up, but the fact of the matter is, interest rates change, right? So just like they were like quarter of a percent, uh, five years ago, they're going to go back to a quarter of a percent, and so we can't just depend on that. We need to have, take advantage of all the other strategies that exist, bonds, treasuries, CDs, right, to always get the best return as possible.
And, but then the other question is, this last question, I'm sorry, guys.
But we always kept about $7 million that we had that we never touched, that we could have invested that money years ago and made two percent. Uh, so given the fact that we did have some extra money this year, made it, I believe, comfortable for the council, say, yeah, let's do something with it, but we could have done something with the $7 million, we've been just sitting to the side for years anyway.
And then for the investment options that are out there, are they that volatile, the, or the interest, is that like such, does it fluctuate that much that we would, in your prof- professional opinion, that we would need somebody to be looking at this daily? Or is, aren't these some of these, uh, stable investments that have a stable interest? Or, I mean,
So like a, like a five-year CD, right, will have guaranteed interest for those five years, right? Uh, same thing with a bond. But those interest rates that are available change sometimes on a monthly basis. So the interest that's available today, investing in some CDs and bonds, are lower than they were six months ago. All right.
Mayor Tim or council member, whichever one, ma'am, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, uh, uh, Treasurer Patterson, that was a really good presentation, I appreciate it. Um, so you know that we have to keep a certain amount of money in cash, in, uh, checking, so that it's immediately accessible to us when we need it, to, to pay whatever bills we have to pay. Are you saying that if we kept it in savings, we would make a higher interest? I think you said that. Would it also be immediately accessible to us, as accessible as our checking account funds would be?
Yes.
Okay. So, okay, so that's my first question, so, um, so it sounds like we probably should be looking at keeping more money in savings, if it's just as accessible to us as checking would be. The other question is, um, the Investment Council, the, the investment, uh, person that you're thinking about hiring, um, I think you're saying that this person would pay for him, pay for himself, right, or herself, because the interest we would be earning would be, I think, you said $167,000 2018, 2019 year, and this person would only charge $50,000, so this person would actually be paying for himself. So we could theoretically hire someone on a one-year basis.
100%, right, so as a contractor, you say, hey, let's give you a shot and see, you know, if you do, if you are worth your, your weight, and if you are, awesome, if you're not, you know, we're, thanks for doing business with us.
Yeah, so we could hire someone on a, on a, on a, on a one-year basis and see if, if we actually, uh, got the, uh, the value out of the person's services that we thought we were going to get. If so, we could keep him, if not, we could, we could end the contract. So that's something, so, in other words, you think we could do that, um, how, hire someone on a one-year basis as a trial?
Yeah, to begin with, I think long-term, you know, I think by doing that, we'll see the value of having somebody that's focused on this stuff, and long-term, eventually, you know, be able to have a full-time deputy treasurer that, you know, in-house, we do that, but we can, that can be a long-term plan for over five years, to, you know, see, you know, have our consultants and whoever make us a few hundred thousand dollars a year for the next few years, and then say, okay, we can afford to hire somebody to be in this position.
Thank you.
Councilmember Awat? Uh, again, thank you for the presentation. Um, when we, when we sat down and spoke about, um, when he brought this idea the first time, um, I wanted him to make a presentation so that way I, we could ask, is there any drawback to investing this kind of money? City manager?
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, uh, I don't want to, uh, say anything about this presentation, because I just saw it, and I just heard it. There are some truths to what Treasurer Patterson mentioned, and there are some errors, you know, for example, in 2015, we were going downhill fast, we couldn't even make the payroll. Where was the $7 million? If you are talking about restricted funds, restricted funds are of different nature, and, uh, we can discuss this, of course, with treasurer, and see, you know, how we can go around it, and I am open to all good ideas. However, sometimes due to capital projects, we need the entire amount. You know, it's not like, uh, you know, you can put it in a saving account and let it, uh, accrue interest, you don't even have time. No, no, I know you can, I'm not saying you cannot, but you don't even have time, because sometimes I am making, uh, like, $5 million payment. You know, we do all these capital projects. By the way, all the money that came was due to prudent decisions that the city council made, and also hard work of employees. Where were we 2015? Did we have even any money to talk about investments? Yes, this year, we are doing a lot better, we all know that, we never did this before. I mean, when we have the budget presentation, you can hear the budget, and in fact, you yourself, council member Awat, as a chairman of the Public Fund Advisory, uh, you have your presentation that this year is a very unique year, comparing last 10 years or 15 years. You know, all previous treasurers, all the previous elected officials and, and administrators in the city, we have been struggling with a structural deficit, year after year, then why we went to furloughs if we had money sitting there? Why we had to do cutbacks, why we had to impose hiring freeze? So, uh, but I am open to suggestions that are coming from treasurer about, yes, today is a different day, and we have to make it more, I am all for it. We have to, uh, make prudent investment to make it more. All I am saying is that we didn't even have this before. So due to the hard work of all employees and prudent decisions, uh, it is a different day today i- in that regard, but, uh, sometimes with restricted fund, we have to always be mindful of restricted funds and general funds. Okay, general fund, you know, if we have excess, I'm all for it. We made that resolutions, and for, for our city treasurer, to make the investments. It, it came from us, from, from me and my colleagues, that yes, city, our city treasurer should invest in this, and city council approved the resolution, and we are doing that, and we are benefiting from it, uh, and he's doing a goo- good job in that. But, uh, as far as restricted funds, we just have to be mindful that restricted funds, some of them, we need them on a monthly basis, some of them, we have to make lump, lump sum payments, and, and huge lump sum payments, you know, uh, the average of restricted funds, grants that we brought in the past 14 years is about, uh, you know, you'd $80 million divided by 14, so you're talking about $6 million, or $5 and a half million a year. We need that money, that's the restricted fund.[1669.98] And uh that's the money that goes toward these, all these infrastructure capital improvement projects that we are doing. And uh there are multiple contracts involved that we have to make those payments. So we have to make a distinction between restricted funds and general funds and we need them readily available. Uh therefore, for example, if I'm investing six million or seven million restricted funds and if I need it in four months, how much interest it can accrue, I don't know, but I'm, I'm open. So if, for example, this is something durable and we can do it, why not? I'm open to the idea.
And just to comment on that, so I mean, so the.
Uh how for the income you showed us a couple slides ago, uh how much was that invested? How much, how much were we putting in, in theory?
That return right there?
Yeah, and how much is that investing to get the hundred sixty seven thousand?
Um that's about six point nine million.
Oh, all six point nine would get us one sixty seven.
That, no, that's what we've gotten so far year to date. So we're expected to get a hundred eighty, eighty million, a hundred eighty thousand this year, this fiscal year, but so far, we've collected a hundred sixty seven thousand just on the money that's in the CDs. That doesn't even count the money we've earned from the money that's sitting in life.
So you're recommending doing how much to invest into these kind of accounts?
So what I'm recommending is having a professional that was, works with cities around the country to understand how, how all that stuff works to help direct, hey, we got some little bit of extra money sitting in the checking account, we can put a little bit of it in savings. Um we can put some of it in something that has a two week maturity. Um we can put something that has like a thirty day maturity. Um and then we can take this, the money that's sitting in life, um and look at this money that's in CDs and maybe we can do some other things besides just have it sit in life. Take advantage of some bonds and some treasuries and stuff like that.
Now, would these be certain items that will make a return?
Everything will make a return. It's, we, we can't invest anything, anything that doesn't guarantee a return.
Right.
We can't, by law, we can't invest in anything that doesn't guarantee a return. But right now, we have thirty six million sitting in checking that I do not say we should tie up at all. But we should definitely get some, put it in some savings accounts, uh put it in somewhere that's gonna earn some interest.
Right, because what, what Arnie, our city manager mentioned, yeah, we're not, we're not done yet. We still have a lot of things to fix and come at the end of the month, we are gonna be discussing a couple of options. Um this, I could understand this, where you're coming from. Um so hire consultant to tell us where to invest the money.
Yeah.
But in the meantime, you wouldn't know or any algorithm for how much to put in now?
Um I mean, we can on our own, we can take eighteen million dollars probably and just leave it in, in savings account at any given time. Cause we're looking at how much we've had cash on hand over the last twelve months. We, on average, the numbers are, if we keep our eleven million dollars in checking, that'll cover our, uh our banking fees, right? That'll give, give us enough earnings credit rate to cover our banking fees. And then the excess of that doesn't necessarily need to sit in checking all the time. We can put it in savings and move it. If we need more than eleven million dollars, we can just transfer it over immediately. Um putting eighteen million dollars in, in savings at a two percent interest will make us three hundred sixty thousand dollars. Um and that's just the most basic, so there's a lot of basic stuff we can do. That would make us way more money than we're currently making, but you know, why, why not do everything that's available?
Is there anything we can do now without hiring a consultant?
Yeah, we can move eighteen dollars, eighteen thou- eighteen million into checking, into savings.
To the check, and where do the eighteen million dollar comes from? From the general funds?
It's just sitting in checking account.
It's just, it is part of our general fund uh?
No, actually, yes, uh about uh twenty six, about ten to twelve million dollar of, is offered is restricted fund and that's what I was talking about, that we have work in progress and we have to make payments. That's the one I was talking about, which we can discuss it, it's not a, you know, rocket science. We can talk about it to see, okay, what, how does it work? If we can invest, it accrue interest, if it can accrue interest in three months, I'm all for it. The rest of it is for general fund, uh that we are expecting about twenty two million dollar by the end of June that we can, we will have as a cash reserve. And like I said, when did we have this type of cash reserve? Can coun- those uh council members who've been here for ten years, do you remember? So it's a different uh day today and I'm all for it. I, I would love to sit with treasurer and, and go over those investments.
So yeah, for the thirty six million, it's just a matter of just putting, it's same bank, check, savings account that pays high yield interest, you move it right back in and out as quickly as you knew with your own bank account.
Okay, I've got a question uh from council member Montero and then from council member Taya, go ahead, sir.
It's not just, it's not a question, but it's just an observation, you know, and maybe a directive. Um because, you know, when, when, when we're talking about what David, thank you again for the presentation, but when, when, when he talks about that we could have earned, you know, half a million dollar in, in uh, in interest, it, it sounds a lot of money, so it, 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 it does, you know, raise a red flag. So uh Arnie.
We go by what the consultant say.
Yeah, my suggestion to uh is, is uh Arnie, if you can um, based on this report, right? Can you create another report for us, uh you know, to balance what Davis is saying and what you were saying because of the restricted and the general funds? And to give us another perspective to say, okay, this is how much money we could or could not invest uh because it was, it would be like, say, twelve months or six months or, or a year or something that we cannot touch this money because we have to make these payments on, on a monthly basis. Like you said, you know, sometime you have to pay six million dollar in, into those restricted funds. So we need to understand from your perspective and maybe, you know, Feliz and finance can help you put another report together to balance with the Davis report so to see where can we go from here? Can we invest some money that'll bring some interest that will pay for the consultant or maybe a?
Just, no, I'm not suggesting we invest any of the thirty six million.
Well, yeah, I'm not saying that.
I think we should wait until the end of the month.
That's what I want the, the city manager to give us a report and then maybe we'll figure it out uh on June thirtieth if we got any good reserve, cash reserve, then we can begin talking.
No, no, absolutely. In fact, this is fun, uh you know, at least we are talking about something good. And uh you know, it's beneficial to the city and I'm all for it. Uh I will sit with treasurer also, Patterson. And uh we go over, there are some that sometimes finance work with us because most of those restricted funds uh is coming with public works. And for example, they ask us, what is in the horizon? What other project is coming? What other payments we are supposed to make? Uh so, and, and vice versa, like what other grants is coming? So we are in constant communication with finance and opening new accounts for new grants or uh you know, making uh large payments toward the capital projects. Uh so I would like to have this conversation with our treasurer and I'm all for it for, you know, all those good investments. It's prudent, that's what we have to do.
Council member Taya.
Yeah, um you know, a few years ago, we're talking about bankruptcy. And um so twenty twenty, you know, uh hindsight is twenty twenty, it's, it'd probably be a good idea for everybody to really have a good grasp on what we're talking about. Maybe, you know, lock everybody in a room so you could really take the gloves off and, and, and go at it and find out what the truth is, you know?
We've always, we always kept a million dollars in the money market account since I've been.
No, I, I understand that and you know, um I'm involved with uh certain groups and we have finance class and they're being taught by um guy that manages a billion dollars of other people's money. And they talk about risk all the time and, and depending on who you are, what kind of risk, what kind of instruments, what kind of investment vehicles you can use. And I think you need to have a good understanding of what the, what, like what Arnie's saying, what the money is, when it came in, what is being used for. Uh I run a nonprofit, restricted money, I understand that. And uh so it's kinda easy to say, well, if we'd have done this, we'd have done that, you know, uh that, that would have been.
Yeah, it's easy, I've been talking about it for five years.
And then it's, it's kinda difficult to say, okay, it would have been this had we had done that. That's all kind of in the past, but I think that this is a great conversation. It's about money. We're always talking about money, you know, um you, you know, you're the money, you're the treasurer, so you know, we look in that area for guidance, obviously. And I, I'd like to know what a consultant would charge to tell me where to put my money. And, cause that doesn't seem to be rocket science, you know, I mean, you, 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 you need to know what to do with a hundred and twenty million. I, I agree with that. You're not gonna just let that sit around and not make you money. But you, you know, uh what does it cost to get that kind of advice? You know, what would it cost me to get that kind of advice and who I would have to go to? Um but it's a very interesting conversation uh because I would like to know more about money coming in and money going out personally as a, as a council member. And I, I wouldn't mind if they locked us in a room and we could really tell each other what we think because it's very difficult to say that.
I'll tell you what I think.
No, I know, but, but there's a decorum that we, certain words we can't use, you know?
Oh, okay, that's different.
You're right. It should be discussed in public.
But I, I, look, David, I, I think that, you know, you're bringing up a good conversation and a good topic and, you know, Arnie, we, we can't, you know, we can't spend any more money and we gotta spend more money. And you know, so that, those conversations are, are going on constantly and sometimes I, I'd like to know what the hell we're talking about, to be honest with you. Excuse my uh.
Then I'll jump out. Mayor Tim?
Uh thank you, mayor. Uh so um again, thank you for the presentation. I would like to uh also make a directive um and to add on to uh, to uh the other councilman's directive, uh account, um councilman Montero's directive. And that would be to look at the possibility of hiring an investment consultant if it's feasible. If um and, and that would be a discussion to be held with you and with uh, with other, others who are involved in finance, in financial issues.
Well, yeah. Me, I can pay me, I can hang out a lot more.
But you're the part time treasurer, that is, the part time consists of twenty hours a week.
Well, if feasible, if, if feasible, I'd like to look at the feasibility of hiring an investment consultant to do exactly what the treasurer is saying, to look at um how we can um better invest our money and um, and, and obviously if this person pays for himself or herself, then uh we're all the better for it. Thank you.
All right, folks, no, I really wanna thank you, Mr. Treasurer, for your, for your taking this initiative to do this. I know you have mentioned it before, but now, over the last four or five years, you've had more solid, more information to be able to make a good, solid argument for this. And that's why people are listening and it's something even the city manager says, let's talk about it.
Appreciate it.
It looks like the main question here is, couple of questions is, that are gonna come out of this, that people are gonna, how much risk is involved by investing this? Will the money be tied up and we will be able to use it? Uh can we move the money around? And how important it is to monitor the investments that we have? So those are like three or four different main topics and stuff that we need to look at.
Would you like for me to answer those or you just?
No, no, this is gonna be for the commentary, we could go on forever and uh, but Mr. City Manager, um or Mr. City Attorney, is this something we, uh is there a, what you call it, a closed door meeting that we could have to discuss some of this stuff? Or, or does this all need to be done? This is not closed session material, so we could just, all right, but the good thing is that everybody's talking and I think most important to be able to understand is uh where were we before? And what are the two reasons that we were at this lower interest, you know, levels? Okay, because there's some history that maybe you're not very too, maybe because you, they haven't told you? And there's sort of still information, you know, that you, can need to get to roll into what's going on here. And you know, it's good that, you know, this climate is also could be attributed to this council and the council makeup over the years, you know, that, look, look how much the interest, it's because of the amount of money that we have had available.
Oh, I, I attribute a lot of the success to the current council. I think a lot of the improprieties that's happened in the past was because of.
Well, yeah, we're not gonna name names and, and previous city manager.
Lack of oversight.
Previous mayors and, you know, I'm just happy to be here and seeing this thing happen under my watch, so. All right, thank you so much, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Let's give him a round of applause. City manager, can you give us your uh presentation, sir? Um because I wanna make sure that we can go and do our little thing outside for a little bit.
Good evening, honorable counsel. Uh this is a very quick rundown of our parking situation in the city. The reason I put it because uh we have another preferential parking district uh application before you uh on the agenda tonight. So uh this map, it starts with our neighborhood map and going down, this is basically the um uh a, a quick overview of our parking districts. We have sixteen parking districts uh overall in the city that is scattered throughout the city. And as you see, it is obviously close to uh high density neighborhoods. Uh you don't see any in Holly Park neighborhood, for example, all single family uh residential zone, the other one uh in Holly Glen, you don't see any. But then even though Bajer Park is mostly single family, but adjacent to Rosecarans, uh you can see the impact of uh Menita Garden area in, in Bajer Park. The other ones that is scattered in Ramona Track and North Hawthorne is due to uh multi units uh here and there uh in, in the neighborhood that all of a sudden, within single family zone, you have uh artery or R four uh that created this problem unfortunately, lack of consistency in planning or, over decades. So I wanted to also share with you uh here the um, and a chart that show comparison between our neighboring city. So I wanted us to look at this, not to feel so bad, it's not only Hawthorne that has sixteen uh preferential parking districts, Manhattan Beach is even worse. Manhattan Beach has twenty seven of them. Preferential parking district is the highest, uh and then Inglewood has fourteen, closes to Hawthorne. And as you see, Gardena, four, and Gardena has only four because if you notice Gardena, in addition to its commercial industrial areas, is predominantly single family. You don't see uh much uh high density in Gardena. And this is why their population is also less than Hawthorne, even though they have same square footage, square mile as Hawthorne. And then Redondo Beach has nine preferential parking district. Uh a few years ago, city council passed an ordinance, uh that was an effort uh through our planning department. And uh by passing this ordinance, uh city council allowed that uh single family owners uh to be able to extend uh cement paving uh and make their driveway wider uh to include another parking space. So some of our residents took advantage of this and uh, you know, they, they are able to park more cars. I'm not sure if everybody knows about this. Uh we never publicized it, but uh this is something they could do. This was done, this can be done legally and uh we have ordinance in place. The other thing that we did, uh this is a, a, a form, application form for parking Ts. So uh we have a policy in place in engineering for uh parking Ts that people can come and fill out application and ask for it, and I tell you shortly why we have to do it that way. These are showing some examples of parking Ts that people came, filed the application, paid twenty five dollar fee and they got their parking Ts in different streets. Okay, this is the reason why we cannot make it a city project. Uh we have here, you know, I'm showing two distance between two adjacent driveways, thirty six foot and thirty foot uh frontage. If city would, uh if city wanted to initiate a project and do this as a city project, we had to stick to standards, MUTCD, manual and uniform traffic control devices adopted by state of California does not allow you to have less than eighteen foot parking space. So therefore, a thirty six foot wide can accommodate two parking space. We can install parking T there. But the adjacent neighbor who has only thirty foot wide frontage, we cannot do that. So it will be a waste. However, if they go based on the application and policy, property owner can come, if, if his cars can fit or her cars can fit, let's say Prius and a Honda Civic, then yes, we will do it. They can file application, that application will be on record. We send a copy to traffic bureau and, and they can do it. And it is enforceable and we can install it. So uh the, the reason why we couldn't do it a, a city project because there will be a waste if we do it that way. We better off leaving it to residents file application. The other issue that has always been come up is the uh, you know, one side, why we have parking only on one side of the street. So again, MUTCD standard is minimum thirty six foot wide. So you see here, one forty fourth police is a, is a standard wet street. Yukon Avenue is thirty eight foot wide, is better than a standard, so we can accommodate parking on both, curb, curb side parking on both side of the streets. But uh when you have a twenty six foot wide street in Ramona, for example, then that's why we cannot accommodate that. And, and it is uh parking only on one side. Sometimes people come and say, yeah, there is room, you can, this is why we can't because uh they are not only uh, we cannot maintain a minimum twelve foot wide uh lane or even, even ten foot wide lane, which is a substandard lane on each direction, uh you have to be mindful of also emergency vehicle.
Uh to the chair, to the chair, uh Arnie, let me ask you a quick question.
Sure.
Ramona Track, because a lot of people that live there have come up to me and, and suggest something. They say, for example, during the cleaning day, that they have to clean that one side of the street that they allowed to park, then they cannot park on the other side of the street. So the question was, can they, only on the cleaning day, that, let's say that the, the left side of the street has been cleaned by, by, by the cleaning trash, you know, car, can they park on the other side of the street just for those two hour period? But, you know, you know, like, let's say, you know, a hundred and thirty second street. So they can park on this south side only. But on the cleaning day, for two hours, they cannot park at all on that street. So they were talking about, can we park on the other side, the north side of the street for two hours during the cleaning period?
Okay, so uh the, the uh street sweeping when they go, they go on, on the both sides because the other. Because the other side is is also, so they take advantage of the other side that there is no parking?
So so they they don't have two days like I have on Ramona, for example?
Yeah.
Ah, so 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 they give me misinformation.
Right, by the way, Ramona Avenue is curbside parking on both sides.
Yes.
It's different, yeah.
It's also, yeah, it is different and have two days, Tuesday and Wednesday.
Yes.
So so that is what some of them were thinking, so those are the streets, so I didn't think about that, that the cleaning day is for the both side of the street, so. So they cannot park in there.
So that so means that like, uh, they do, they probably plan it in the morning when everybody's out at work. So all they have to do is go, get in their car, put it in their driveway and then can put it back in.
Yeah, it's ten to twelve, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, if it's just.
In fact, we, what we did, we cooperated and we reduced the window in every other uh, city is either the whole day or it is four hours. In in Ramona that you mentioned, Councilmember Montero, we actually reduced the window for trash pickup, two hours only. It's only two hours, and you know, that was quite a bit of uh, you know, accommodation. Because we have to be mindful that it makes traffic bureau job and parking enforcement very difficult also. By making this surgical, uh, you know, decisions on one side of the street and the other side, it makes the enforcement very confusing also. But on top of that, like I said, the street sweeper truck goes on both side, take advantage of that.
Yeah.
So this is how their routing works. Here, I just quickly mentioned that the issue regarding Ramona Track came up uh, few times since two thousand and six. So we are talking about, this is like thirteen-year-old subject, that always, sometimes they talk about making it one-way. So the entire neighborhood become a one-way maze and uh, and uh, you know, so this was a study by engineering and uh. Aside from the cost, cost is not an issue, because you know, we can, we can go after grand. It's gonna cost two million dollar, basically, to make this happen. Uh, because it requires traffic signal modifications as well as, you know, signage and and some other uh, civil work. Where you wanna, for example, make a turn, prohibit prohibit uh, negotiating a turn into a. Wrong-way street. Normally, we go and we make a bow out, we build a bow out and we make the turning into that street difficult. When someone is going in the wrong direction. So overall, estimate was about two million dollar. However. You know, yes, by making these one-way, you you actually increase the capacity of the parking twice in the neighborhood. That you do that. However, it increases distance and driving time because you're talking about a half-a-mile-long streets. And then also half-a-mile-long blocks and also it increases uh, more congestion due to school traffic and church and churches in the area. It uh, it also affects uh, emergency vehicle. Because, you know, uh, even when we do it, I mean, on those one-way, uh, but allowing parking on both sides. For example, on that one-thirty-third street I showed you previous slide, is twenty-six foot wide. You have to allow eight-foot parking on each side, so then it only leaves you ten-foot-wide lane. This is not doable for a fire, for a fire truck, so we cannot even do that on that street, for example. So it has these limitations. Uh, the alley uh, right next to the new hotels, if council have noticed. Became much wider than how it used to be, and the reason for it was a requirement of from fire department regarding a fire lane. Because they wanted fourteen-foot-wide uh, lane for the fire truck. So uh, we have then, you know, something like this increases uh, the potential for speeding. Because it's one-way, there is no opposing traffic, and also it increases potential for wrong-way drivers, either accidental or intentional. So, and also it impacts uh, trash truck and the street sweeping. So it has its. It's, yeah, it on the surface, yeah, it gives us more capacity, but it has its issues. And it was never uh, materialized because uh, I remember in the past. People in the neighborhood were kind of divided. Some were for it and some didn't like it. To go and drive, uh, they they had a habit how to go home and uh, now they have to go and make a U-turn and add one more drive. They didn't like it. They didn't wanna lose that habit of getting, getting to, you know, to their residents. So it didn't work out. Uh, I just wanted to give you this quick rundown because we have that uh, preferential parking district uh, resolution. On the agenda before you, so give you an update and refresh memories. Okay?
Okay, yeah. Uh, I'm gonna give her, and then bounce it back to you. Go ahead.
So um, a few, I think we we had decided at some point that we were going to put a moratorium on preferential parking districts. And we, because it seemed like, um, it just seemed like it moved the problem from from one area to another, and I'm just wondering. What is your opinion about that? Because are you, do you recommend that we go back to doing preferential parking districts?
Well, so, yeah, let me just, uh, to be honest with you, uh, Councilmember Valentine. I, we have not really observed, when you look at these scattered parking districts. It didn't trigger that, the, we never actually established any moratorium, to be honest with you. The issue came up from previous city clerk. Uh, who was complaining about, uh, and you know, the, his relatives' neighborhood that um. You know, um. The complex he was complaining about, when we actually went there physically and inspected, it was a triplex. No garage was available. All garages were converted to either storage or other things, but 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 no garage use whatsoever. And uh, and people were parking, so three units were parking everywhere on the streets and. And they were complaining, I mean, uh, previous city clerk was complaining about that, you know, all these vehicles, like there were eight or nine of them. In that triplex. Uh, they couldn't go park in the adjacent neighborhood because of preferential parking district in those neighborhoods. This is why they come and ask for preferential parking districts. So, so they don't wanna be impacted by higher-density uh, you know, complexes or apartments for that. For example, this one that it is before you tonight is because of an apartment building on Prairie Avenue. That is impacting that uh, single-family street on Burley Track. So it doesn't show that, it really doesn't show that, oh, now that I brought you this, so two months from now, I bring you the adjacent block. It doesn't show that. We haven't experienced this. Because, and the reason for it, the apartment renters that go and they wanna try to park in that block. They are not gonna go half-a-mile down and and park in the adjacent block and then half-a-mile walk back to their apartment. So it doesn't work like that, you know. Um, I know it is a a problem. I'm not saying this is a good solution. But uh, you know, uh, this is mostly coming from single-family neighborhoods that are being impacted by higher-density neighborhoods. And uh, at least moving forward, uh, actually, John is sitting here, when he was our planning director. We passed a new ordinance, the city council passed a new ordinance, that we'd increase the number of parking. For two-bedroom, for three-bedrooms. That is a, that is a solution, moving forward. That we require additional parking and guest parking for new developments. That is a good solution for that.
But don't, but don't you see this as, you know, once we do it here, we're going to have to do it in another neighborhood and then another neighborhood and then another neighborhood?
Yeah, so uh, like I said, city council never established any moratorium. What you see in this map is the result of thirty-nine years of this ordinance in place. It went to effect in nineteen eighty, and for thirty-nine years, we have been doing this, and this is what you see. Uh, before you, um, even, even though number of um, high-density uh, complexes increased. But uh, this is the end result of this. No, we haven't seen one like that. If we see something like that is happening, we raise the red flag ourselves. But no, we haven't seen anything that, and and this map shows, this is the reason I am sharing this map. This map shows that. That's not what you see. They're actually scattered throughout the city, adjacent to higher-density neighborhoods. You don't see this block and then adjacent block and then next block to it, no. So even the one, for example, on the west side of this, west side of Inglewood, you see three streets, that happened all at once. That was one application few years ago, that the entire neighborhood came and asked for it. So it wasn't like it was happening incrementally.
Thank you.
Arnie.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just a question, because for example, there is some neighborhoods in North Hawthorne. That were complaining about preferential parking, that they said they they cannot park. Like you said, on that residential area, but they live the same area, North Hawthorne, that some street have preferential parking, but some other do not. And they were complaining that sometimes there is parking available on those streets that they cannot park in there. So there is a double, you know, kind of double side of this story about the preferential parking. Some people say, yes, we want it. Some people say, no, we don't want it. So I don't know if moratorium, you know, moratorium about this parking thing will solve the solution, but the solution is fine. What we're gonna do to find a solution for parking. The other thing that I would like for you to do, maybe send your staff to do, is that the T-parking. Put the, that, that explanation on the TV, on Channel twenty-two. Because a lot of people do not understand that we, the city, cannot do the T-parking based on your explanation. So it's to tell them there is a process, that they can pay a fee of twenty-five dollar and then they can apply to do the T-park in front of their property. So maybe that, because a lot of them sometime come here complain is because they say, why the city don't put T-parking everywhere?
Yes.
So that is what maybe we need to educate them and say, we cannot do that because of the state code, but you could apply. And you can, you know, you can have your T-park in front of your space. But the other thing is to talk about this preferential parking, because some people do not like that, so I don't know, what's your opinion?
No, no, yes, they do, they don't. Sometimes they come and they discuss with us and they decide not to pursue, and I tell you why. So you see here, I brought the North, North Hawthorne. These are the number of preferential, one, two, three, four, five, and six. We have, if you wanna add the one, west of Inglewood, also seven. So these are the entire North Hawthorne with preferential parking there, parking districts there. So when they come and discuss with us, they, each household get only three permits. And they know that if there is going to be a birthday party, they they are in the preferential parking district, so they have to manage their their guests somehow. They cannot come and park there without permit. So when they hear this, then sometimes they just don't like to pursue. You know, so when they come and ask for it, they are committed, that yes, this is what they want, no more than three permits. And uh, and then they are willing, and these are normally the neighborhoods that are severely impacted by apartments and by high-density. So so when they come, high-density complexes, so when they come from work, they cannot find place to park. So they are the ones that go all the way for the parking districts, and the ones that they don't like it, they haven't reached that point yet. You know, so, and they know that uh, they don't have guest parking available by by that, by preferential parking, okay?
Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, Arnie, um, when you were talking about that apartment building on Prairie and that situation. I- isn't part of that problem that uh, there's little mechanics right in the corner, one-thirty-fifth and. And Prairie and they park a lot of cars out in the street all the time?
Actually, um, to be honest with you, that could cause it, uh, Councilmember Toledo, but I wasn't really uh, involved in the discussion with the. With the applicants, my staff, they were talking to them, and what they told me was mostly they were impacted by the apartment. On Prairie Avenue. But but you're right, I mean, sometimes, but those are daytime. Daytime folks are at work.
You know, sometimes they, you know, and I I'm I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent, you know. But sometimes they just park cars out there, out in the street and leave them there overnight, they're gonna take them in the next day. You know, and so there's cars that.
If that happens, we definitely hear the complaint, and we will definitely send code enforcement.
Yeah.
Yeah, but but these particular ones specifically, they were complaining about apartment building across on Prairie Avenue.
I know, yeah.
But they can't say that for sure. It could still be the uh, the mechanics. So if we do this, and if we vote for it, then we could be like, turning a blind eye to another problem, which is those mechanics. And so that's gonna be transferred over to the other blocks, because these mechanics will drive around, I mean, that's their business. They they don't wanna lose their business and they're gonna move those cars somewhere else and that's gonna, that's gonna translate to the other streets.
If they, if this, if it is really, they, because neighbors, uh, neighborhood residents, they know. They know if it is mechanic, but they they tell us, and they, we we have received complaints on that, that they specifically. Sometimes complain about a shopping center or a mechanic or a body shop. But in this particular case, but uh, like I was just telling Councilmember Valentine. We don't have any indication that you are giving it to one block and then adjacent block is asking for it. This map doesn't show, and that's why I'm here, just wanted to show you.
I'm I'm sorry, Mr. City Manager, I mean, I love you and everything, and you know, I agree with you on most things, but. I get calls from lot of those preference, uh, so people surrounding those preferential parking, where they're complaining that they're impacted. Especially the ones over there on um, in uh, Bajer Park. Streets over, like a couple streets over. These are people that are walking all the way from a, from across Rosecrans because of those gargantuan apartments.
Yes.
Further down that, that's why we ended up giving that preferential parking.
Correct.
But these people have no problem that live in those apartments on, in Manita Gardens, walking all the way, because they need to find a, you know, a place to park.
These are mostly on Rosecrans.
Yeah, but then also around those other, around, now that Mr., the previous city clerk got his little preferential parking on that street. There're surrounding streets that have called me complaining about this, nice and empty uh, streets, you know, where the preferential parking is supposed to go. And so I'm getting the calls constantly. I just don't make a fuss, because I just, you know. I was of the opinion that we were either not officially having a moratorium, that we were gonna be careful about what we would do. Unless utmost last minute, last resort, uh, we had to. So I think we should be careful about this. Um, I'm not arguing anything for or against the the specific preferential parking, but when the item comes up. I mean, I really think we should just see where the problem is treated. A lot of times, some of those people are asking for those preferential parking. Are not acknowledging that they're the ones that are, like, their neighbors are the ones that have more than like, three or four cars. It's them, the people on the block, that are contributing to the problem, that like, single-family residents, you know, they have many people living in. In the, they're starting to try to convert garages, and a lot of those people have those cars, so they're contributing to part. It's not always the apartment people only, you see? So.
No, that, by all means. No, I just wanted to share with you the information.
Absolutely.
If council wishes to, uh, you know, uh, establish a moratorium, um, by all means, you can give me directive.
You know, thank you, sir.
I just wanted to ask, Arnie, you you had, in your conversation, you mentioned that we need to build with two and three parking spaces. In the new construction and.
Yes.
How do we do that? When everybody wants to bring in a affordable housing component and you gotta give up some parking and. How do we enforce that? Because I remember we were pretty excited that we actually passed that.
Yes, so city council already passed, we have ordinance in place. However, you are referring to some state legislations, those are different issues. Yeah, they can supersede and actually bypass whatever.
Every developer that comes in.
That is correct, but that's beyond us, right?
Okay, okay, it sounded good, sounded good.
That, I know that my council colleagues are eager to try to tackle this parking problem. We've told the community that you have these parking T's available. I've mentioned it every single time somebody comes and complain. I've said over here, uh, to go talk to the appropriate department. But I think what, you know, we can't, I think right now might not even, we should be actively looking for a solution. But we should also be bracing ourselves for what this stupidity that the Sacramento politicians are trying to throw down our throat. Do you guys understand? We come up with the pro, with solution right now, alright, we're cool, but then these idiots up there pass the stuff that they're trying to, you know, they're trying to convert all of LA County and just a big apartment building.
And half a parking per unit.
Do you guys understand, do you understand what I'm saying? Like, right now, uh, let's start to look at the options, but also brace ourselves and prepare and try to forecast what's going on.
A question.
So so when we issue the preferential parking, it's almost like, it's, it's gonna even, possibly even getting worse, so. Let's just go ahead and move on to the next stuff, guys. You got something else?
To the chair, I just wanted to uh, take this opportunity, change the subject. I was gonna introduce. I was gonna introduce our new, we have hired a new Director of Building and Safety, Mr. Peter Wang. Would you stand up, Mr. Wang? Mr. Wang has been, he was a director of, I mean, he was a Polancik engineer, supervising Polancik engineer with LA County Building and Safety. He also taught for several years in Cal State Fullerton, and he's been a practicing structural engineer in private industry, so we are happy to have him with us.
Welcome.
Alright, folks, we're gonna take 5 minutes, but before we do that, I wanna acknowledge one of our colleagues, who wasn't here last year, so for us to sing happy birthday to him.
We have oral communication right now.
You know, we're gonna do that after, yeah. And last week, Councilmember Hadar Awad, he turned another year of life, you know, I don't know, can you say, you wanna say? 28, he's 28 years old. So we wanna congratulate him.
Jesus Christ.
And we also wanna acknowledge the fact that he's received his MBA, his Master's in Business Administration from USC. Along with that, we also wanna sing happy birthday to Councilmember Alex Montero, who wasn't here to, we weren't able to sing happy birthday for him when he left his birth.
That was in January.
But, you know, it's better late than... I remembered, I had to push for this, I don't know, maybe people are working against you, brother. But I wanna include my colleague too, okay?
Thank you, thank you.
Let's sing happy birthday to him. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Hadar and Alex. Happy birthday to you. Yeah.
Many more.
Alright, folks, so we're gonna take...
Oh, through the chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
I also want to congratulate my colleague, Hadar Awad, on his graduation, I think that was a great accomplishment, congratulations.
Thank you.
That's a big deal, young man.
He's joined the big leagues up here now. Alright, guys, so let's take about, council members, 5 minutes for us, so we can get to business, 5 minutes for us, but everybody else can stay out there taking, yeah, no, actually, let me do that too, alright. We're in recess. City Council is back in session. I'm gonna ask the Madam Clerk to please read the guidelines for oral communications, please.
During oral communication, speakers shall have 3 minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the City Council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies of the body shall have the discretion at the clause of oral communications to refer your remarks to the city manager for a study, investigation report, and oral recommendation.
Okay, I'm going to ask Humble Hearts Academy, are they here? Raise your hand. Hi, how are you? Adahora Beauty Supply, are they here? Adahora Beauty Supply and Salon, are they here? Alright, Humble Hearts Academy, can you please come up? So, folks, Patricia Donaldson, who is the President of the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce, had to leave, and she would have done these presentations, so these individuals, these companies have opened up here in the city of Hawthorne. We're gonna hear about that, hear about at least Humble Hearts Academy, to find out what they're about, why they decided to come to Hawthorne, and what they're looking forward to offering our community. So welcome to the city of Hawthorne, let's give her a round of applause. Can you tell us, go ahead and tell us kinda...
Sure, so my name is Felicia, and I'm the owner of Humble Hearts Academy Preschool and Infant Center. We're located right up the street on Hawthorne Boulevard. I decided to come to Hawthorne, I actually had a home daycare in Gardena, I wanted to expand, and Hawthorne was available. Yeah, it's been really great, I'm really happy to be a part of the city, everybody's been really warm and welcoming. I didn't have anything prepared, but just thank you for the opportunity to be here and to be a part of this city.
Thank you and welcome, I'm gonna go take this over to you.
May through the chair?
Yeah, real brief.
Welcome to the city?
Thank you.
You have a daycare center, did you say?
Yeah, so it's a preschool and an infant center.
How many children do you serve?
There's 20 children that we're licensed for.
And is your, is your, is your, is your school full now, or...
Yeah, so we're at capacity, we're actually in the process of expanding, so I'm working with the city right now. We just installed like a prefabricated building, and we're in the process of getting that cleared and licensed, and we would be able to have about like 45 children after that.
Fantastic, preschool, meaning what, from what ages to what ages?
So ages 6 weeks to 5 years of age.
That's really good, that's a good service for the people, thank you.
Yeah, so it's an infant center, 6 weeks to 2 years old, and then the preschool is 2 to 5 years old.
The address again, what's your address?
It's 13325 Hawthorne Boulevard.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, and congratulations. We also wanna congratulate Adahora Beauty Supply and Salon for choosing the city of Hawthorne, a wonderful place to be in, so let's give them a round of applause. I don't have any other cards, so if anybody needs to speak to the City Council, please form a line.
Honorable Mayor Alex Vargas, members of the City Council of Hawthorne, good evening. My name is Letitia Tan, I'm one of the librarians assigned recently at the Hawthorne Library. And with me tonight is Melissa, who is a great supporter of the Hawthorne Library, and who is also an active member of the Friends of the Hawthorne Libraries. This evening, I would like to invite everyone to come and visit us, especially during this great event that the library and the American Red Cross are sponsoring. On Tuesday, May 28, between 12 o'clock noon to 6 o'clock, there will be American Red Cross Blood Drive. So please come to Hawthorne Library to donate a pint of blood to the local Red Cross. It takes just a few minutes, and it's a great way to help others in need of blood during catastrophic times in their lives. Please call to sign up for this work while course, or go to the redcrossblood.org and find the blood drive to sign up. Thank you, and I hope to see some of you at the library, if you can, thank you.
Thank you for being here, ma'am, thank you. Brother Ali, come on up.
Greetings, my name is Abdullah Ali from Islamic Center Hawthorne, I'm the community outreach person. In the name of God, greetings and blessings to everybody here, and in the audience, and on television. First of all, I'd like to, on behalf of Islamic Center Hawthorne, we would like to extend our sincerest condolences to the families and victims of the continuous threats and attacks on churches, synagogues, and mosques, and all places of worship. We condemn all acts of terrorism and hate crimes against humanity. We offer our condolences and extend our hand of friendship and solidarity. Peace begins with us here. Piggyback on that, I would like to extend invitation to everybody personally. First of all, I know most of everybody here, but I don't know Mr. Talida. Talida?
Talida Talida, yeah, Mike.
So, welcome joining a great group of members here. I've been in Hawthorne for 35 years, and I've seen a lot of changes. I'm not one to complain, I look at the positive, and there's a lot of positive going on in the city, despite of a lot of past that's happened, but there's a lot of changes, positive changes, and we're the good group here, and welcome also. So on this Saturday, May 18, at 7:30, we're inviting the Hawthorne community to our inner faith community dinner, which we are, as Muslims, we are observing Ramadan, which we fast from sunup, some sunup to sundown, and we break out fast, and we wanna invite the community to the dinner and to break fast with us. So I'm gonna pass out, everybody mostly got emails and personal invitations, but I like to come do this every year in person, and pass out the cards, and I'm gonna pass out to the audience behind us. Thanks again. Oh, parking, I was, I own electric cars, so I was gonna, I got on, Arnie, before about, like, where's the charge vehicles to charge up electric cars, but, yeah, but they cut out at 3, cuz the teachers, you know, but anyway. But now I understand the parking problem you explained to me, but I would like to put that on agenda one day, how we can, you can also make money, I don't want free, you can also have the ones that you can charge to, to charge, so, you know?
Charge to charge.
Yeah, charge.
We'll do, yes.
Yeah, charge to charge, there you go. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you for being here and for the invitation. Next, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, Lisa Aguilar. First and foremost, tonight, I would like to thank you personally for leading a beautiful city, the city of good neighbors, which is abundant in the rich mix of life. I would like to make some suggestions, options tonight regarding a couple of longstanding issues. For the last 3 years that I've attended the council meetings, the one issue that always comes up is parking. There is no single solution for that, we would have to go back to 1922. One size does not fit all. Number 1, one of my suggestions would be, suggestion, there's plenty of unused overnight parking in shopping plazas. Why not collaborate with those businesses, plazas, to use those spaces to alleviate some of the parking shortage? Number 2, I recently purchased a Fiat, I would highly recommend a small commuter car for single commuters, single commuters, I'm sorry, single commuters that take up 1/3 of the parking space needed, also to help with this shortage. Why not negotiate with local dealerships to incentivize Hawthorne residents with a rebate? Business district versus, oh, a second issue within the business district. I have probably have done door knocking for the business expo. Throughout the businesses, there are businesses that maintain their doors closed, there is plenty of warehouse space, but having a storefront should not only come with a business license, but with the commitment of adding to the beautification of the city. Businesses that are located next to businesses that are closed during normal business hours make the adjacent business depreciate. Suggestion, within the requirements of a storefront business license, normal business hours of operations should be a condition of issuing a storefront business license. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please, next, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro team, council members, our department heads, and our wonderful city of good neighbors, Lethell Williams, a proud parent here in the city of Hawthorne, and I congratulate Mr. Hadar on his master's degree, much kudos to you, sir. And I definitely want the voters here in the city of Hawthorne, when you voted to reelect our city treasurer, your vote is really, really put to some good use, and I commend him on his bringing forth how we have money just sitting lazy in the life. And when you ever invest, because I'm business manager from college, that was my study, whenever you invest, even a $50 bill, you're gonna get something back. And to hire this firm, they will be our watchdogs, you could always move your money. I even tell my son, you got $20, invest it in something, and you could keep an eye on it yourself and have it move, it would definitely profit the city. So get that life money from being lazy and invest it, and let it work for us. Yes, it's a new day, it's a new day, things are getting better for us. We have a wonderful city manager, well, ex-city manager, Mr. Shabir, have been keeping a very good watch on things here in the city. And I want to say that our city is growing. Parking is definitely gonna be an issue, because our city is on a good rise. You have even, on my complex, you have 12 people living in one unit, and 7 calls to that one dwelling, so, I mean, not only that, once these college students come back home and bring their innovation to the community after they leave college, graduate, right now, graduations is going on all over the world, and a lot of them are coming back to the city of Hawthorne, and they have cars. We want them to come back, and so it's just gonna be one hand feeding the next hand, and let's pray on it, cuz we don't want to stop the growth here in the city of Hawthorne. We want them to be a part of our wonderful paved streets, our new businesses that's coming up, it's gonna be wonderful. And for the children that's graduating here in the city of Hawthorne, kudos to you to the prom that just happened at Hawthorne High. It was a phenomenal thing, even though I had to work at the Rose Bowl, but it was a phenomenal thing that I saw pictures and everything, even my daughter herself went out and did it, and even now, we're pushing out things for the next generation, which is the next prom and graduation people that's coming, and I thank everyone that supported our chocolates for prom, for cheerleaders, chocolates for cheerleaders. Thank you, thank you, thank you, and thank you once again, Lethell Williams.
Commissioner Love?
Yes, from here in council, I just want to congratulate the young man, but after, please tell me what's keeping you so warm, I need a little of that, thank you.
Next, please. Okay, now it's Ronnie, Ronnie's turn. Hey Ronnie, how are you?
Good, Happy Mother's Day to the mothers. You know, by the fire station and by the library on Tuesday, back to street sweeping, why is the fire department so selective to park on the streets on Tuesdays, and they don't get tickets? I thought that, for 1, if they're only on a fire business, well, they're just sitting there parking in front of, in front of the station, and they don't get tickets. While everybody else gets tickets, what, if they're not doing, at a fire call, why should they be entitled to park there on Tuesdays? And the trash is cluttered in the gutter on my, in front, on the side of my street, where they, they block, their trash and all that shit, stuff is in the gutter from where they park, or the street sweeper has to go around them, cuz they, they don't, why should we move, we don't get tickets? They're not, they're not doing official business, they got the city yard, they can park their police car, fire trucks, cars in, you know, they'd rather park on the street sweeping on both sides. They take, they park in the middle of the curb, so nobody else can park in front of them or behind them, they taking up 2 spots, right in front of my place, nobody can park it, cuz they're parked right in the middle of the parking spots for 2 cars. And on Tuesdays, my gutter has got so much trash that where they park on Tuesdays, on my side, Tuesdays, and in front of the nursery, they park on that side on Tuesdays in the red zone. What the hell, why are they entitled to park in a red zone if they're not conducting fire business? They've got a park, they got a yard, that used to be the city yard, they park their personal vehicles, and they're parked the cars on the street. I mean, I see, all day long, people, they park their cars on there on Tuesdays on my side, and Tuesday, and Wednesdays on the, on the front of the Hawthorne Nursery, and they're parked, and you can see garbage piled up, and when they leave, there's garbage under their cars, and in the gutters, from where the sweeper sweeper has gone by and left it, go around their vehicles. They should be ticketed also, why should they be entitled not to get ticketed? The charging, residents that park there on Tuesdays get tickets, but don't know the fire department can park there anytime they want. They should get, they should be eligible for tickets too. They got a city, they got a yard they can park in, you know, the, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for expressing your concern. Okay, I don't see anybody else for oral communication, so oral communication is close ordered. Madam, Madam Clerk, may we have your consent calendar, ma'am?
Mr. Mayor, I have 17 items on my consent calendar for your approval. Right?
Do you have to read them? Okay, let me lean back right here.
Item number 9, approval of the City Council minutes for the regular meeting of April 9, and the regular meeting of April 23, 2019. Item number 10, approval of waiver of full resolutions on tonight's agenda. Item number 11, the city treasurer requests the approval of the warrant... Item number eleven, the city treasurer requests the approval of the warrants. Item number fourteen, resolution number eighty-sixty-nine, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, declaring its attention to levy street lighting assessment for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and set in Tuesday, June eleventh, twenty nineteen at six P M as a time and date of a public hearing. Item fifteen, resolution number eighty-seventy-four, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, proclaiming Wednesday, May fifteenth, twenty nineteen as National Day of Prayer in the city of Hawthorne. Item sixteen, resolution number eighty-seventy-five, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, proclaiming the month of May twenty nineteen a lupus awareness month. Item seventeen, resolution number eighty-eighty-one, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, state of California, supporting Assembly Bill sixteen ninety-four, expanding the territory of the San Gabriel and Lower Los Angeles Rivers and Mountains Conservancy to include the Dominguez Channel watershed and Santa Catalina Island. Item number eighteen, resolution number eighty-eighty-three, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, authorizing the destruction of various city clerk department duplicate records pursuant to resolution number seventy-one seventy and government code sections three four nine zero nine and three four nine zero nine point seven. Item number nineteen, resolution number eighty-eighty-four, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, declaring its intention to levy weed abatement assessment and setting a public hearing date on June eleventh, twenty nineteen at six P M for such proposed assessments. Item number twenty, resolution number eighty-eighty-five, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, proclaiming Saturday, May eighteen, twenty nineteen as Armed Forces Day in the city of Hawthorne. Item twenty-one, resolution number eighty-eighty-six, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, designating hundred and thirty-fifth Street between Jefferson Avenue and Prairie Avenue as a preferential parking district. Item number twenty-two, resolution number eighty-eighty-eight, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, proclaiming the month of May twenty nineteen as melanoma awareness month in the city of Hawthorne. Mom, must done. Item number twenty-three, resolution number eighty-ninety, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, proclaiming the month of May twenty nineteen as mental health awareness month in the city of Hawthorne. Item number twenty-four, resolution number eighty-ninety-one, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, authorizing the submittal of an application, acceptance of an allocation of funds, and execution of a grant agreement with the California Department of Transportation for an airport improvement program matching grant. Item twenty-five, resolution number eighty-ninety-two, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, authorizing the destruction of various finance department records pursuant to government code section three four zero nine zero and resolution number seventy-one seventy. Item twenty-six, resolution number eighty-ninety-three, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, opposing Assembly Bill thirteen fifty-sixteen, requiring cities to issue cannabis licenses licenses based solely upon the percentage of city residents who voted in favor of cannabis sales, thereby subverting local land use decisions. Num item number twenty-seven, resolution number eighty-ninety-four, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, opposing Assembly Bill seventeen sixty-three-two regarding density bonus law for adoption.
I'd like to pull twenty-one and twenty-seven.
I'd like to pull seventeen and uh twenty-six.
I have a comment on the fifteen.
All right. Let's go one by one. Item number, okay. I'm literally, it's almost half. If we go one by one, I think we'll be okay. Let's go sweep, okay? Item number nine, I'll make a motion to approve item number nine. Nine through fourteen. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
I'll make a motion to approve item fifteen and sixteen together. Fifteen, uh uh no, there's a comment on fifteen. Go ahead. Sorry. Go ahead. One by one.
Uh to the chair, it's because the National Day of Prayer was on May second, so does it any, why are we putting May fifteen on it? Okay. I just wait because, you know, I went to pray last week, so we're just, so I have to go back tomorrow.
It's okay.
All right. So second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Item sixteen, I make the motion. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Item seventeen, discussion?
Yes, I uh wanted to ask the city manager, um why are we uh supporting Assembly Bill sixteen ninety-four?
Sure, council member, because uh you know, uh lower lower Los Angeles River Mountain Conservancy is one of the ten conservancies in the state of California by expanding it and including Dominguez Channel. Dominguez Channel is our watershed, is the Hawthorne watershed. It actually qualifies Hawthorne for grants, for for park improvement and stormwater improvements. So we welcome this.
Thank you.
I make the motion?
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
I make a motion on eighteen, nineteen, and twenty? Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Item number twenty-one, I would like to table this item and request for our city manager, city attorney, to come back with an uh resolution to a moratorium.
Sure.
I second that.
Do I, okay, please vote on that. Okay, no, no, actually, there's an opportunity for our colleague to abstain. Can we can we give him the opportunity to do that? Okay, it's still in the active form. Yeah, and she hasn't made a roll call. That's fine. But we let's not make it a habit though, because it's gonna be like everybody's, yes, you might be the, no, oh, let me be yes. No, no, but just as a informational thing. Thank you, sir.
All right, the vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes with council member Montero abstaining.
Okay, thank you, folks. Um item number twenty, I make a motion for item number twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four and twenty-five. Please vote. Twenty-two through twenty-five, twenty-two through twenty-five altogether.
New issue, mayor and council member Montero. All right.
I I my my vote's there.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
I uh, there's a comment on twenty-six.
Yes.
Go ahead.
So um the reason that I wanted to bring this to the attention of the public is that if you recall, um our city prohibited the sales of marijuana uh in in or cannabis, as they're calling it now, in the city of Hawthorne. And as and since that time, there has been a real push by Sacramento as they're pushing housing. They're also pushing to force or pressure the cities into um into accepting marijuana in some form in the city. This latest res, this latest bill requires cities to issue cannabis licenses based solely upon the percentage of city residents who voted in favor of cannabis sales. So what they're saying is, if your city was voted over fifty percent to allow cannabis, um to allow cannabis sales, then they're going to, if that bill passes, the those cities would be forced to allow a certain number, and they've got a, they've got a a formula of the number of um facilities that must be established in the cities. So I think another, this is another example of the erosion of local control. Our city did vote to ban the sale in our city, and um there have been several bills. And and of course, as you know, the 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 regulation was passed that subverted because the state allowed cities to opt out, and then a regulation was passed which said that deliveries could be made to any legal address anywhere in the state, which also subverts the cities that uh voted to not to allow the sales in the city. And this is yet another attempt to subvert local control. So this is why I wanted to bring it to the attention of the public, and I wanted to uh make sure that I wanted to ask us to oppose it, but I also want to ask us if we would send that opposition letter to our local, to our representatives, to our assembly member Burke, to state Senator Bradford, and also to uh to 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 the governor. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes.
Could we do that, please? Thank you. So I move to, I move to.
To the chair?
Yes.
Yeah, just like let me add a little bit, just for guys to understand. For example, Hawthorne voted fifty-eight percent to legalize marijuana, right? So the state is saying that our city would allow at least twenty-five percent of marijuana dispensers, based on this formula, on the number of liquor licenses that we have in the city. Let's say if we got one thousand liquor license, for example, twenty-five percent of that one thousand would have to be marijuana dispensary. That's the formula. Like the the number of liquor licenses that we have actually in the city of Hawthorne, twenty-five percent of those would be cannabis licensing because Hawthorne voted fifty-eight percent to legalize marijuana. So that this bill is, imagine twenty-five percent, so we'd have a marijuana dispensing every single corner of Hawthorne on Hawthorne. So that is why we need to oppose this this bill, and I support this one hundred percent.
It sounds like these guys up there smoking the stuff themselves. They're crazy, man. All right, go ahead. Councilmember Taylor?
No, I mean, it's a ridiculous matrix. It is, it's four, for for every four liquor licenses, one marijuana license. And then I think it it said also, for every ten thousand people, you have to have one, uh you know, just a matrix doesn't make any sense. It's like they're just grabbing at straws now to figure out a way to start getting some.
Well, I think I think what they, what happened was, it it became a disappointing because they promised all the cities they were going to make millions and millions of dollars if they allowed cannabis in their cities. And it didn't work out that way because a lot of times the illegal distributors were outnumbered the ones that were legal, and so the cities and the 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 legal distributors were not making the money that they thought they were going to make, and the illegal distributors were making out like fat rats. So I think that um the state is trying to find a way to uh.
Or cities.
Or the, you know. To force the cities to accept, um to to accept dispensaries in their cities to help the um to to help the cannabis manufacturers. I think that's what it's all about, helping the uh helping those uh those manufacturers.
I would like to know which, how our representatives are here, our state senator, our state assembly person here and and the local areas where they stand on this issue. Can we find out? And if you could let us know, so we can let the community know. Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
That was a good one, huh?
So I move, I move that we.
I second it.
Okay.
I move that we oppose, um I move that we pass resolution eighty-nine three opposing Assembly Bill thirteen fifty-six.
Please vote.
We want to do our own loss.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Um item twenty-seven, I had a comment on that, and this is another example of the state trying to take over control, uh local control. They think that they know what's best for communities like ours, and they live in their nice little cozy ranch-style homes somewhere or like gated communities, where they're never impacted by some of the decisions they make. That's the bottom line, and that's like, and you guys gotta be careful who you vote for, and I I wanna throw this back on you, the voters. I have to. You guys just, they come with like these nice little mailers, and you guys don't pay attention to how they vote. Here you go. They want marijuana stores on every corner. Now they wanna say that there's unlimited, they wanna push for unlimited density of apartments in cities, unlimited. These guys could build unlimited, okay? There's nothing probably gonna stop them from like us rezoning some of the purely residential areas to be able to accommodate for this stuff. Do you guys understand that? I mean, this, there's a lot of this NIMBY stuff, and I might not wanna hit some people over the head in the community sometimes because you guys just don't understand and absorb it, that you gotta be careful who you vote for. So this, so let me just uh kind of tell you what this is. Right now, there's unscrupulous developers that come into cities, and they say, oh, we're gonna like help out the community, and we're gonna give low-density housing allotment thirty percent of the units. Well, they ask for concessions. Since they're doing that, the state looks, oh, my God, they're doing such a great thing. They're gonna allow for thirty percent of the development, so we're gonna let them have less parking, smaller, smaller-size units, and a couple of other things where they can pack more units into one place. So what does that do? That always like aggravates our parking problem, aggravates it, increases it. So now, let's see, that there's gonna, they're gonna allow for a density bonus of eighty percent. They're gonna be able to increase their, if they say that they're going to be able to increase uh the amount of low-income housing, you know, they're going to uh give them a density bonus of eighty percent. They're gonna give them four concessions. So they'll have less parking, they'll be able to build up all the way until the sidewalk. There's not gonna be any lawn space. It's all gonna be solid concrete all the way around the building, uh smaller units, no green space, because they're helping the community by building. What they do is they build the inferior paper, paper-thin walls for these units, shoddy workmanship. And they're calling that, what quality of life is for anybody, whether it's a low-income person, a moderate-income person that lives in the community. That's a disservice, and it's also taking away local control, and we as a resident, we as your elected officials and many of you and everyone that's been coming up knows that there's a problem with that stuff. We need to find a solution, and we need to be able to have some of these beach cities and some of these other supposedly upper-echelon communities out here that aren't taking their responsibility to take some of the brunt. It can't fall on us. So I mean, I'm sorry, I know I'm going on, but that's why I'm asking our planning department person to be able to be, come up with a good argument, to be able to push back on the arena numbers that they're imposing and other things that they're doing. So go ahead.
If you have a lot that you can build eight units, and the code says you can build eight units, but if you say I'm gonna make five of those affordable housing, then they'll allow you to build fourteen units. So every developer comes in and they say that we're gonna build affordable housing. And what that does is just creates a bigger problem with parking, with everything else. And then um that was a constant thing on the planning commission. Every ma, well, not everyone, but most of them would come in, and when they were gonna build eight or ten units, it always turned into fourteen. And when you do that, you have to give something up, the quality of the construction, uh and so. But now what they're talking about really is just kinda like the Wild West, because we just need housing and build whatever you want. And uh and that's pretty scary. That's pretty scary if they can come in and then just run away building. And um and I, you know, Hawthorne is is really, I I, you know, we've, I've heard it said, but now I'm I'm pretty convinced because I spent some times with other other cities, Hawthorne is a very high-density city, you know? You have places like I I mentioned to a guy that was a representative of San Bernardino, and he said, well, how many, what's the population of Hawthorne? I said, about ninety thousand. He said, well, how big, what, six square miles? And he says, well, over here, we're like twenty-five thousand. We got I don't know how many square miles, you know? So Hawthorne, it really does have uh uh an issue, and how how we fight that, you 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 know, you're gonna have to think about that, because everybody comes in, you know, they come in, and I know that, you know, it's about about the Benjamins, you know, they wanna make money. I I got that. But, you know, I I wanted to create that architectural commission to slow. to slow things down, to slow things down before they get to the planning. But that's the future. And, and, and we have to be ready for that. It's not that we don't want to do it. It's that, that's what everybody's project that comes to planning. Not every, but most of them. That's where, that's where they come in. They, if you, if you want to build eight, if it allows you to build eight, if you do this, you can build 14.
Through the Chair?
And, no, I will. And nobody can argue that the city of Hawthorne hasn't done its part for making, of having available housing. We've done more than our part of having available housing.
And if I'm wrong, planning, please correct me. But that's what I remember from my time over there. You know?
Mayor Protem.
Well, I, all I wanted to say is that we can push back as hard as we can, and I think we are doing what we can do. But remember that there are probably about 200 bills that are in the legislature concerning housing. And many of them are determined to erode local control and to, to force their own standards on all of the cities. Because what they want is, and someone has told them, they've, they've had these consultants, they've had these lobbyists that have told them that the reason that, that the, several things. The reason that the housing cost in California is so high is because there's a scarcity of housing. So there needs to be more housing. So they're determined to force the cities to build more housing. They've also said that the homeless problem is, we, we need to have housing for the homeless. So the people in Sacramento have ideas in their heads, and they're forcing, they, they are determined to force the cities. They look at one size fits all. They are determined to force the cities into, to do what they believe follows their vision of what they think California should look like. And I think the cities have to really, really be very strong and push back against this. I would be in favor of, and I, I'd like to ask the City Attorney to investigate this. I would be in favor of finding out about the cities that have filed a lawsuit against some of this legislation, and maybe we could join, join in that lawsuit. Can we do that? Thank you.
But some of those people have felt the wrath from the governor. So I mean, what's wrong with that? You know, does he respect the cities or not? Some people have something to say, does he, is he open to criticism? Is he open to hearing a different, like, aspect of things?
Seems not.
Or is he gonna just bash us on the head, you know? I got my progressive, you know, ideas here that I want to, well, I don't know. Just go ahead, you talk. Your turn, man.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, let me give you like, for us, I tell you the truth, it's gonna be bad news. Because some of these bills is going to pass. And the governor is going to sign them. So it's how we going about doing our own business here in the city of Hawthorne is gonna change a little bit. But because what the governor and the legislators listen is that he's, like Ms. Valentine said, short of housing, he have come up with this plan that we need to build 2 million units by 2023 in California. 2 million unit in California. So, and they have, they have a plan, how they're gonna do it. And the fact that we might even lose into the courts because they have shown all these statistics that California economy and population will suffer gratefully if they don't build these units. There will be shortages of manpower for business, for workers in the state of California. So they have shown this to the legislator, even to the courts, that it's going to probably go in favor of the governor, even if the cities goes against it. Because they have said that the cities have created this problem. They said City Council, like us, have passed ordinance prohibit affordable housing in some neighborhoods. So they have said that we create this problem, so now they're gonna take this control away from us because they want to do it right. But of course, we know they're gonna do it wrong. Because when you start thinking that we're gonna do skyscrapers on Sepulveda Boulevard, even on Hawthorne Boulevard, because they, they think that all these trans-oriented, that's going to create apartment buildings with half parking space per unit, not the whole car, but a half a car. So that, that's imagine what's going on. So these things is, is gonna be a tremendous headache for us for these years to come, until the next election for governor, to tell you the truth. So, so this thing is gonna happen from now until '22. They're gonna try to pass all these laws that's going to put a rope in our necks and say, you do this, or we're gonna penalize you. So that is what we have to come up with some strategy to do something to stop the state. But like I said, we would have to counter, you know, attack with some different ordinance and stuff like that. But the housing is an issue. And I gave my card to the Mayor of Redondo Beach. And I said, I will work with you on this. Because he said, if the state goes and passes all these housing laws, he's going to fight for a constitutional amendment to make sure that the state will not take the control of our local government away from us. So I said, I'll work on you on that constitutional amendment because the state has become ridiculous with all these, you know, state laws and Senate bills. That doesn't make no sense to our community that, we know, we, we've been here. We know what it is. So they, they don't live here. So we, we have to stay together. And that, that constitutional amendment for, for the fall, not the, the 2020, but in 2022, we might be able to go and say, let's do a constitutional amendment that tells the state, the cities control the destiny, not the state. Thank you.
Go ahead. Are we good? All right.
Yeah.
Nobody else? Councilmember Watt, nothing?
I totally agree. We've always been fighting this.
Yeah, I, I, I agree 100%.
Okay, I just want to make sure if it's on board, we're not like all this.
No, I mean, I got, I got a couple of things I want to talk about a little later. Be right before we leave.
Okay.
Did we, um?
I make a motion on 27. Please vote. All right, folks.
Olivia.
Please vote.
Knock it up.
It's not coming through?
No. There you go.
Do we have the close session?
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
That's what it says. Do we have the close session? All right, guys, let's try to get through this other stuff. I mean, I'm not want to prohibit any, I don't want to limit any discussion, but let's see if we can, because it's starting to get, you know, this is gonna be our longest meeting ever. General Matters, not consent items. Item number 29.
Resolution number 8070, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, County of Los Angeles, State of California, authorizing the issuance of sale of bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $123 million to refund certain pension obligations of the city. Approving the form and authorizing the execution of a trust agreement and a bond purchase agreement authorizing judicial validation proceedings relating to the issuance of such bonds and authorizing actions related thereto. For adoption.
I move. Please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
32.
Ordinance number 202179, second reading, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, amending Chapter 5.74 Taxi Caps of Title V Business Regulations and Licenses, Divisions II Businesses Regulated of the Hawthorne Municipal Code Regulation of Taxi Caps. For adoption.
I make a motion?
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
33.
Ordinance number 2182, second reading, an, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, adopting a categorical exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act and approving Zone Tax Amendment 29, 2019 ZA01, amending Title 17 zoning, Chapter 17.04.010, 17.35.000, and 17.35.130 of the Hawthorne Municipal Code related to structures and signage in residential zones and making findings in support thereof. For adoption.
I move.
Second.
Please vote. Uh, it was seconded by Councilmember Montero. Please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
34 has been pulled. Mr. City Manager, your consent calendar, please, sir?
Yes, Mayor, I have items 36 through 42 for your approval.
I make a motion.
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Mr. City Attorney?
Uh, yes, I have two items for your approval.
I make a motion on 44 and 45.
Second.
Please vote. All right, uh, this one goes to Mayor Protem Valentine. The second. Please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Um, we have the elected officials' reports. But for the sake of time, I mean, if we could kind of keep them as brief as possible, just so we could get through. I mean, if you really have something important to say, it's cool, but, you know, just. Mr. City Treasurer?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I want to thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to give my presentation earlier. I want to thank the community for coming out and making your voices heard and participating in the process. Happy Mother's Day for all the mothers. And I look forward to seeing you guys next time.
Thank you, sir. A Deputy City Clerk, Monica Decresi, anything from your office?
I wrote plenty.
Okay. That was a good one, okay. You like it there, don't you? Okay.
Yeah.
Councilmember Watt?
All for coming. Uh, thank you for the congratulation remarks about graduating. Thank you for the birthday. Happy Ramadan, happy Mother's Day. That's it.
Sure, thank you. Councilmember Taya.
Well, um, I do have something to say. I was at a SCAG, a SCAG, uh, conference, and I learned quite a bit about everything that we're talking about today. You know, I learned that Southern California has, uh, you know, the six counties that are part of SCAG. There's 191 cities. 14 million people live in Southern California. We're the 15th largest economy in the world here in Southern California. So the 14 million people and 191 representatives, you know, that some, most, a lot of people were there. And they talked about a lot of interesting things, particularly about the future. Everything that we've been talking about, you know, they used, um, talked about disruptors. Disruptors are people and play, and organizations that come into, into a, a period, and they disrupt the way that things are done. Uber, Lyft, and, you know, some of those, and, and how, we're gonna have to come up with new ideas. They talked about, a lot about, um, uh, city planning. Uh, interesting use of roundabouts to help out with the traffic because they had a representative from Ford Motor Company there. And he, you know, everybody's into green this and green that, and, you know, uh, and he said, listen, transportation is gonna be a box and four wheels. Now, whether it has a, how we propel it is a different story. And, you know, if you've got an electric car and you're still stuck on the 405, you're still stuck in the 405. So it was, it was interesting because there was a lot of brilliant people in, in there coming up with great ideas, very futuristic ideas that require a lot of brilliant and, and, you know, community planners to implement some of those ideas. But the fact is that population is doubling, people are coming. Uh, they come to California no matter what because the money's here and, and Southern California's a place. So we have a big challenge ahead, how we're gonna deal with all these pressures that are coming our way, whether it's from Sacramento or just by the number of people that we have living in our cities, you know? And how we move and how we, we move around. And they gave some good examples of what Uber was doing in Vegas and stuff like that about, oh, and then, and, you know, the wave, the, something of the future, get, get ready for this, is these cars that drive themselves, you know? That's another big thing coming up. And so all of that stuff is gonna be part of the near future. Whether a car has a tailpipe or not, you know, it's how we move. So anyway, I appreciate the city sending me. The accommodations were great, you know? And the food was good. And, you know, met a lot of people, you know?
Wait a minute, we gotta look at that stuff now.
You know, so that was it. That's, that's, it was a well-worth trip. Thank, uh, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Montero?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, first I want to say thank you to the staff because this, you know, again, this agenda was full of resolution and ordinance, and, and it, it takes a lot, a lot of time to put things together. We got, you know, some report that's gonna be gone to the state to sort from the housing elements. So thank you for all these reports. So it's outstanding work. Uh, just, I want to say thank you to all of you that participated on Relay for Life on last April 28 and, the 27th to 28th. So, you know, so far they have raised, you know, $17,000 and continue to raise more money. April 28 was the Volunteer Appreciation Day. I want to thank all of you for showing up. Uh, it was a great event. We had about 250 people over there receiving their, their award. And, and the kids from the Pravestah Middle School Fine Arts, you know, did a tremendous job dancing. And this teenager, you know, played saxophone, you know, Ethan Flores, a fantastic kid with saxophone. So thank you for all of that. So like I mentioned, May 2nd was the National Day of Paray. So myself and Mr. Mayor went to the Saginaw Youth Church so to pray with our church leader for, for good nation and, and for the salt of those in Sacramento. So, um, I also did attend the SCAG in a South Bay City of Government Board meetings on behalf of Ms. Valentine. So it was a lot of information that, you know, brought a lot of these word, Senate bills about housing. Uh, one thing that also I attend, on May 1st, I attended the SCAG for the Homeless Task Force. And there is a lot of information about homeless coming up from the county because of that major H. The budget for 2019, 20, and now 1920 is gonna be $450 million for the, for the homeless program in Adellic County. $450 million, thanks to the Proposition 8 that we, H that we passed. But one statistic is again, homeless rising faster where rent exceed third of the income. Like UCLA had the statistics that people that spend more than 32% of their income in rents, I expect to be rapid increase in homeless. So because people are paying a lot more money right now. So these people have have like, like I said, one paycheck away to be homeless because they're paying a lot of money in rent. So that's another issue that the governor is using, that we need to help build more affordable housing, okay? So that's to keep eye on this stuff. Uh, May 6, I did attend the Clean Power Alliance. You know, they moving forward, you know, more people are getting clean power. You know, they enroll themselves in the program. So it's a, this partnership with Edison. So we're seeing more people wants clean power than, than the fossil fuel, you know, from the past. Uh, May 10, Ms. Valentine and I attend the Housing Workshop. That is what we learn about all these things that's coming up. And we have powerful lobbies that are lobbying for these bills in Sacramento that wants more housing in our neighborhoods. So we have a fight over there. Uh, May 11, it was a great event. It was a night to remember, the Hawthorne Historic Society Hall of Fame induction banquet. So they, they did induct about six people. And it was an outstanding night, you know, to learn about these famous people that lived in Hawthorne. And then loyal poets and actresses, you know, Barry St. John and the clerks. So it was a very nice thing. Thank you Hawthorne Historic Society, and I see two board members over there. So thank you for that. And again, you know, Hawthorne is a city of good neighbors, so we need to protect our city. We need to protect our citizens. And coming up, the Clean Up Hawthorne Town Hall Meeting, Thursday at 3 o'clock at the Hawthorne Memorial Center, 3 PM. You're welcome. You're welcome, all the apartment owners, business owners, even the homeowners. Come learn about how we're gonna clean up this city of trash and bulky items. And again, May 23rd is the Hawthorne President's Council K-9 BBQ Dinner at 5 PM. You're welcome, it's $5 for adult, $2.50 for children. And I'll meet you guys there on Thursday for the Town Hall Meeting next week, the 23rd. So bless, bless day, bless evening. Thank you very much for coming, and we love you all.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Mayor Protem Valentine.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I, I risk reiterating what Councilman Montero just said. But we did attend the South Bay Housing Forum on Friday. And the keynote speaker was Senator Ben Allen. And there were several panel discussions. And these, this type of forum is good to go to because you do get a chance to find out how other cities, the thinking of other cities and the pressures that other cities are facing, which are very similar to our own. The several panel discussions, they were, they were very balanced. Some were making the case for more densification of housing. Others were providing this perspective of the local governments. It was very educational, very lively. And again, I, I, I think sessions like these are vital to go to so that we can find out what's going on in the state and all of the, and all of the movements that are, that are going on in, in response to, to proposed legislation. And also, I attended the Hall of Fame Dinner on Saturday night. I want to congratulate the Hawthorne Historical Society. The, the Hall of Fame Dinner was very elegant at the Ayers Hotel. Gave us a chance to wax nostalgic as we gave recognition to the historical figures of Hawthorne who contributed to our rich history. And also gives us perspective because we have to, we have to be concerned not only with the big picture, we also have to be concerned with preserving the quality of life that Hawthorne has always maintained. And we have to be concerned with preserving our city of good neighbors. So one of the things that really kind of brings you back to the old time when the Dale S. Clark Company Realtors was founded in 1954. And this was one of the tributes that they, that they recognized. They recognized that as one of the recipients of an award. And his, his descendants continue the same business to this day. And it's just a, a family business that has continued all these years. And then they also gave honor to Dana and Ted Joya and to Coach David Capeluto, who was a teacher and football coach and who led his students to many football championships. And there were many people there who remembered these people and who had, some of them who'd gone to school with them. And so it was just a very nice evening to spend in nostalgia, looking back at Hawthorne and looking forward to what Hawthorne will become in the future. But always remembering the roots of Hawthorne and how it came to be. So thank you Historical Society and for once again researching and bringing to light the rich history of the city of good neighbors. I want to thank the City Treasurer for bringing us the information he did tonight and, and giving us some new perspective on how we should approach our, our finances. And, let's see, is that all I have? And I want to, again, congratulate Councilman Awad on his birthday and on his graduation. And we wish everyone a happy, a happy Mother's Day. Those of you who had, were mothers, happy Mother's Day. And that's all I have. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, City Treasurer, thank you so much for the presentation today. We listened, I think you talked to a couple of us previously. And today, we asked some follow-up questions. So it's very good information, a good perspective, some things that I'm pretty sure that we could take a look at and possibly act on. So we're gonna have a serious discussion. And, you know, like I said, four or five years worth of data. You can't make, you can't make an argument based on one year's worth of data that you're privy to and fully observed. You have two or three, four, or five years, you can make an argument. So I think we're at that point now. And let's see what decisions we can make, okay? So just continue your good, the great job you're doing. Councilmember Awad, congratulations on your MBA. You've been working hard, and you invested a lot of time in doing that. So we, we're very happy to have you on the City Council and give us, giving us that perspective that you bring to the, the millennial aspect that they say, right? And then all the business sense that you bring. So thank you so much, and happy birthday. We, yes, that's right. We went to the Day of Prayer Celebration at Centinella Bible Church. Yeah, Centinella Bible Church Youth Church. And it was a great experience. We're praying for our community, praying for, they were praying for us as elected officials, for all of us, and for society and for, you know, for the nation, for the world, and all those, you know, people that, that are out there. You know, people who are suffering, people who are, you know, persecuted for their religious beliefs, people who are attacked for their religious beliefs, and defense of, you know, all life. So different things that we were praying for. So it was a great experience. So we, thank you to Centinella Bible Church for being great hosts. So I just, I think there's just some frustration with regards to Sacramento and how they do things. And it seems like this is evident right now. And it comes also with the fact that there's a supermajority up there. Nothing's wrong saying that, you know, the party that's in charge right now, that's what it is. But there's, they're taking action irresponsibly too, taking advantage of it. It seems that a lot of people that get elected up there, just, there's, they think it's a little fraternity party up there, a little sorority party up there. They don't, seems like they want to challenge themselves to see how many bills they can come up, pull out of their, you know, behind to, you know, put, you know, to list. And they don't think about what they're doing. And they have, like, what, people in college or something? Or people in high school that are coming up with these ideas? I think we just have to be careful who we elect and make sure that we, you as residents, pay attention to what's going on because this is gonna affect your quality of life. I agree that there is a problem with the housing in, in the, in the state. I think, you know, I can even possibly even buy the argument that we need to produce more housing. But not on the backs of cities who already are overly populated. Do you understand that? There's a big difference.
No question.
Not on the backs of us. We've already have a big, a big situation here where there's a lot of housing units available. More than probably all the cities in South Bay in LA County. We're probably the, we're in the top three or four highest density cities in LA counties. So they want, they, they need to look at it case by case basis and not just use a carte blanche, like, a policy for everybody. And they're not doing that. And these communities along the coast and fancy, even up at the hill, they're, they're, they're just getting away with not being able to produce what they need to. It's just not fair. And, you know, I mean, they think we're not gonna fight back, that we're not gonna bite. I mean, come on. All right, so I guess we're going to have a closed session. So for those people who are in the audience who just simply want to go home, we've done our elected officials' reports. When we come back, all we're going to do is just vote on what we've decided in the back. So if you guys all wanted to, who are in the audience want to just simply go home, there's nothing exciting gonna happen at the end. So is there anybody who wishes to speak on this closed session? If not, I'll declare oral communications closed. I will now recess the City Council meeting to conduct a closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda. I ask that my council colleagues go straight to the back so we can get it over with. We are in recess. Okay, folks, we're back in session. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, we have met in closed session regarding Escalante versus the City of Hawthorne. The council voted unanimously in closed session to approve a workers' comp settlement agreement with Escalante. The settlement agreement will be made available to the public and the City Clerk's Department after it is executed by all parties and approved by the court. That is my report.
Anything further from staff or city council members? Okay, this meeting is now adjourned.